This afternoon. Taking your time out for your interest in county government. Good to see you here. So we'll start with our invocation with Mike Supervisor Carter and with the pledge to Supervisor Marshall Jameson. So let's all stand please as we head.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great to see everybody today. Today I'd like to make some comments about Donna Ray who was longtime Rocky Mount Forest to be reckoned with sometimes. And we lost Donna Ray this month and I'd like to just have a moment of silence for the invocation and remember Donna Ray today. Thank you. And amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a recognition. I don't see the person here. We want to give him a resolution. Mark Young, he served for several years on the DSS Board. Young, are you here? I don't see him. So we will, Mike and Parker, if you will, take that resolution, please, and just mail it by FedEx, US Mail, whatever you want to do.
Yes, sir.
See if he gets it there and we'll sign it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. So. That thing's not on. Yours is not either, is it? Okay. Can you hear me now better? Is that good or?
You got it.
Okay. I'm getting thumbs up now. Okay, let's move it on to the agenda. We need to make a motion to approve the agenda. Are there any changes in the agendas? Any changes that you see needed, we need to do? Not seeing any, I need a motion then to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
And it's been second. All. Anybody that agrees signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? All right. All right, on the consent agenda. We've got several things here on the consent agenda. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to pull item 12, please.
12?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item 4.
Number 4? All right. Let's go with number 12. Is there something that we can get an answer to you for? That this can go back or do we need to pull it off and do it at another time?
No, I'm going to defer to Mr. Sandy. This needed to be pulled so that he could report to the board on this.
All right, it's going to be attachment 12 in your book. Mr. Sandy.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you noticed in your packet, the executive summary was incomplete on this item because the bids that we were expecting to receive came in really after the packet was to go out. So on your station in front of you, you should have an executive summary that's revised May 20 relative to the Lake Watch Stormwater Pond and Drainage Ditch. And so what that information now has is we did receive two bids. It has the two companies we received the bids from. So it has the bid sheet, has the engineer's recommendation as well for accepting the low bidder, which in this case was Stonewall Bridge Incorporated for the amount of $49,500. And so staff is recommending that we approve the award of that bid for this project to, this is the Lake Watch Collection Site Project. It's finishing up some Stormwater Pond and Drainage Ditch work associated with that that will allow us to complete that project and also go forward with getting the street accepted by VDOT for that section of the road. So the recommendation would be to accept the low bid for Stonewall Bridge. And there is a motion, if you're going to hear it separately or if you're going to take it as part of the consent, then it would just be the motion to approve.
Is that an interesting question?
Yes, sir. I just want to state that.
Are you satisfied with leaving it in and doing it?
Yes, sir.
It's all at one with one?
Yes, indeed.
All right, we'll do that. All right, Mr. Jamison on number 4, please.
It seems to me that we got a 500% increase in a fine. That seems very excessive to me. And I don't, I just don't see that bigger jump in a fee like that, fine. I think it should come down double or possibly even triple as far as I could go with it. That's just my feeling.
And I could speak to that if you'd like, Mr. Chairman.
All right, please do.
So currently the late fee is really an extra $100, so it's really doubled. So I know one of the issues we have sometimes is with late submittals. And so what we were trying to do was really trying to encourage that on-time submittal of applications. It doesn't have to be 500. It can be any number the board decides. Kind of like taxes and other things, we can advertise a higher number and come down, but we wouldn't be able to kind of go up. So it's up to the board's pleasure. You can advertise 500, do something less, or you could reduce it now and we'll advertise whatever amount, you know, the board wishes for us to advertise. So just a little bit of background there. Currently the fee would be $100 in addition, so it'd be a $200 total fee if you were late. As Mr. Jamison said, what the proposal is, is to raise that late fee from 100 to $500.
But if I understand this correctly, Mr. Jamison, this is for a public hearing?
Public hearing, right.
Now, at the public hearing, when we have that, we can lower that fee to whatever we want to. We just can't go up. It's like when we did the tax rate. You know, you can come down.
I understand.
But you can't go up. And if we leave it at the 500, you're okay with leaving it at the 500 for the public hearing. But then when we actually do the vote, we can come down to the 100, 200, 300, whatever you like.
Okay.
Okay?
That's fine.
All right, so you're okay with leaving it in there?
Yes, sir.
As proposed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, on the consent agenda, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda in a second.
I will, Mr. Chairman.
We've got a motion. Who's?
Second.
The second. Madam Kirk, we do a roll call on this, please.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, Mr. Daniels, your monthly report. How are you today, sir?
Well, Mr. Chairman, good to be with y'all, members of the board. Two things today, so I've got my regular report this afternoon and tonight we'll be back with you for the public hearing for the secondary six-year plan.
Yes, sir.
So the report for this month, we've got a lot of information on it. I'm going to highlight a little of that. So Cooper's Cove Road, we recently did a pipe replacement. It was a jack and bore that is complete. And then moving on to the next 60 days, it's kind of a mixture. We've got some completed and upcoming work for plant mix, our secondary plant mix routes. So you see a list of secondary routes that some have been completed. We've got just a little bit left to do and there's some shoulder stone that comes at the end of the paving that's yet to be done. So that's well underway and early in the year for paving. That's a good thing. Dudley Amos, we've talked about that a little bit. We continue to do a little bit of patching and the chip seal or the surface treatment patching, we did that, Ms. Smith. And we've got some plant mix patching to do that we hope to get done by the end of this month, maybe early June, and then it'll be chip sealed, complete overlay next year. So hopefully that'll arrest that problem.
Thank you.
The Cooper's Cove Pipe is closed right now. The section of Cooper's Cove, I mean Cooper's Mountain, I'm sorry, Cooper's Mountain is closed. That's a little ahead of schedule. We may finish next week and then we will move on to Hopkins and in the order they are in your report, Green Level, McNeil Mill. Getting some larger culverts replaced, which is, that's good news for us. I'll skip over the future pipe replacements and I'll go to Mountain Valley. We're doing some patching and surface treatment work on that. We're doing that with our state forces, the complete surface treatment. It's a fairly short segment, easy enough for us to do, and we were already doing a lot of patching, so we just chip sealed the whole thing. Griffith Hill, so that's actually a superstructure. Our bridge crews working on Griffith Hill and that got delayed. Some of you may have seen the original schedule. We were going to close it on the 21st of May. That got delayed to June 11th. So we've notified everyone in the county of that delay. And then we've, some of this patching, the last bullet under the maintenance activities for the next 60 days. We've completed some of that, the 122 near Scruggs Road. If you recall, we had a, going northbound, we had a, it's pretty bad in the right wheel track. We've got that hopefully under control. We've got some drainage issues and stuff that's causing some of that. Near Lakewood Forest on 616 and then Brooks Mill, we haven't done the Brooks Mill work. I don't think that's finished yet. But that'll get all wrapped up this week. That was all this week and doing it all at night. Not on here, but in the future. We talked about last month, the intersection of Scruggs Road and 122. When you make the right turn out of Scruggs, headed northbound on 122. And over the years, we've made several improvements to Scruggs such as adding the right turn lane. There's a lot of traffic and specifically lawnmower trailers and stuff like that. When they come out of Scruggs, they track over on the shoulder, which is pretty minimal as it is. And we've got a signal pole, a signal junction box and what have you right in that shoulder. So it's pretty tight confines. Last month I talked about setting the stop bar back on 122 to help that situation. We discussed that internally and actually we've moved away from that plan because of some current concerns about volume on 122 and backing left turn traffic out into the main line of 122 when they're waiting on that green light. Even though it's got a flashing yellow arrow, still can happen. So what we're going to do now, we're actually going to relocate the junction boxes. The junction box is flat, flush with the ground. We're going to relocate it behind the pole. Will allow us to grade that shoulder back, slope it up to the signal and we'll actually do a little paving in that radius. So we're going to give them a little more inside of the radius area to track on, just in case you were looking for that stop bar to be moved. Moving on to page 30, a couple of traffic studies I'll mention. So we had a couple of requests at our roundabout at Hardy Road. Some folks had maybe took the wrong exit, if you will, coming out of the store. So if you're not familiar, the store on the corner of Hardy and 122 actually has a leg of the roundabout, which is a little bit odd, but just the way it all set in place, that's how we designed it. And there's a concrete island and if you're not paying attention, apparently you could go to the left of the island, which puts you in conflict with the traffic, especially if you wanted to go to 122, make 122 northbound maybe, whatever. We've added some signs, it was brought to our attention, we've added some signage to hopefully correct that. The graphics are on the ground. The message was there. It was just maybe a little harder to see at night. So we worked on that. It was a little interesting to us. We didn't anticipate that, but it was a good teaching moment for us. Also, on Route 40, near Novelty, we've had, we had a crash a few months back and as a result of that crash, we did an automatic review and our traffic engineering staff didn't have any changes that they suggested.
Todd, I have a question on that one.
Sure.
So Novelty actually touches 40 at two points. So is it the point where you used to have the BBNT bank? It was east of that or is it the other point?
So, you know what? We don't have the east or west Novelty. And Mr. Quinn, I don't know exactly. It was, so we label it as a crash. What we do, just to give you a little awareness, if there's a fatal crash, we do an automatic review, we being our traffic engineering group. So the location of that crash is where we started, but they don't just look at that point on a map, if that makes sense. So our group will go to a given termini. They'll, and they make some field judgments when they're out there, but they look at more than just that crash location. They'll look at signs as you approach it. They'll look at the side streets. They look at vegetation. So they do the automatic traffic engineering review as a result of the crash, but they treat it as if we asked them to come out and look at the route. So where the actual crash was, I'd have to go back and reference the crash report.
That was a head-on crash?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And like I said, you see those when there's a fatal. Project status. So going back to, I think, January, I was excited and told you we're going to get bids on all these projects on 220 and then I had to come back to February, come back in February with a little different news. So now I get to come back to you again and tell you that we bundled those projects and they are going to be advertised, they should be advertised this month. We are a little bit anxious to see what comes of that because this is a very large project. It includes work at, on 419 at 220. It's the seven intersections that were all included in this project to begin with. It includes the Pleasant Hill intersection. It includes the Bond Brook Mill intersection with 220. So it's a lot of projects that were bundled into one because if you recall when I talked to you in February, we didn't get bids on the projects. And the one bid that we did get was, I think it was more than 15% above the engineer's estimate, which is an automatic trigger for us to review and we didn't accept it. It was too high. So we're back at it again. We are hopeful that we get some reasonable and responsive bids and we can get this work underway. I will say to those projects, we are going, whoever the successful bidder is, we're going to work with the contractor, we being our production division and others in the department to phase this work, if you will. An example I use is Bond Brook and Works. So we shouldn't be working on Bond Brook and Works at the same time because when we're working on Bond Brook Mill at the intersection, we wind up closing the crossover. So that means the traffic is probably going to go to Works because they can't make the left out of Bond Brook Mill if they're coming to town or something. And that's logical. So, and I don't know for sure that it'll happen like this, but I'll just say ideally we get the Works work done first. We improve that efficiency, that's the purpose in the project. Then we drop back to Bond Brook Mill and do that work and those folks that would have otherwise gone Bond Brook will come Works and we won't see as much delay. Now, that's in Todd's perfect world, so you know, we'll see if that happens. And there's a lot of other projects, obviously, in that mix. The last thing is Goldfinch Circle. That's a rural addition through revenue sharing that the board approved. We've got all that worked out and we'll be working on that and completing this this summer. And it'll, it's part of our secondary system at that point. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone got any questions for Mr. Daniels?
Mr. Daniels, just looking at the project status here, can you tell us where we are or what's the thinking on 220 and Henry Road intersection? I know, you know, we've done a lot of.
Yeah, so 220 and Henry is a potential smart scale application. It's been, before it's been applied for, it didn't make the six-year plan, but it's in the queue. If ultimately the application gets submitted and completed, we had a meeting about it today. We have several project meetings ongoing right now. So that's about all I have. The application is pending and I know Ms. Cooper's working on that stuff. August 1, I think, is the deadline for those applications. And that will, if successful, be part of the six-year plan in FY '26. So we get around to June of 2025 is when that'll be adopted. Okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Todd, good afternoon. Can you refresh my memory, Todd, on any progress or if you all are addressing the issues on Lakewood Forest that I had mentioned a couple of months ago?
So I don't know that we've been down there and did some patching and what have you and worked on it. I'll have to ask our maintenance manager to see, but we did note that you had asked about Lakewood and we've, so right now, we're doing a little bit of mowing. You see some of that going on and we're just, some of our normal operations and we will do our best to get that in our queue.
Just email me.
Yeah, we will. We will. We'll let you know.
Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
Todd, I saw where you said y'all were a little ahead of schedule on Cooper's Mountain Road.
Yes, sir.
I'm wondering if we have the proper signs up about that because I found out the hard way about that pipe replacement. Maybe I missed them? That was on Sunday.
I'd like to tell you you did, but I don't.
I don't, I don't remember seeing anything.
So what you should see, Mr. Mitchell, for any of these closures is a static, so it's aluminum sign, orange that says Route Such and Such will be closed and it'll have dates on it front, like a date whatever to whatever. And that goes kind of to beginning of the segment. So Cooper's.
Well, I saw them on Cooper's Mountain Road, but I didn't, I don't remember seeing anything on 890. I'm not, 619, I mean.
You wouldn't likely on Sontec. For these lower volume secondaries, we don't, so let me think about something you may have seen in the past. A larger closure where you see detour signs along the secondary routes around the closure? We don't necessarily do that for the very local, low-volume rural closures. Partly because the vast majority, if not all, of the traffic is local. So when we close something like that, they know how to get around however they want to go. If there's a situation where we've got some agritourism, I got one in Bedford County right now, that we had to put some detour signs up for because there was something in the closure that was a little abnormal and would have people come from out of town. So we will address that. And of course, if somebody on the board sees something like that and tells us, we'll absolutely address it. But typically for the local roads, we don't post the entire detour route.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Guess we'll see you back about 6:00.
See you at 6:00. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Carter, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So our finance report for this month will be through April 30th, so 10 months out of the fiscal year. So what we'd be looking at is about 83% of the budget for our revenues, for the ones that are recurring monthly in that sense. They're meeting or exceeding that threshold we would expect. For expenditures, for the most part, we're below that threshold, which is what we would want to see. So overall, our funds, our general fund, which is the main operating fund of the county, is anticipating no out-of-the-range expectations. So no concerns there. Do want to graphically show that to you. So as far as the revenues, you can see the month, you can see a little bit. In April is an uptick. It ebbs and flows and so there's no rhyme or reason as far as what we can see on that. You will start to see an increase realistically next month because of the sec, well, really the first half of real estate. And so that's going to kind of change some of those comparisons. But as far as the breakdown between the categories, property taxes, we are seeing a little bit up compared to last year. We've mentioned that before, personal property is still the big driver there. Your other local taxes and your state revenue are pretty much equivalent to where they were at this point in time last year. So to break it down a little further for your real estate tax, so you can start to see a little bit of an uptick, it's about $661,000 over where we were this point in time last year, about 52% of the budget. So that we would, as you would see from prior years, in May, we would anticipate that large increase as payments come in. Personal property, that's only once a year, so there's little change from that from last month. It's still about 112% of budget from what we anticipated, so better. The vehicle values didn't moderate as we thought they might and so we have a good collection on that. Local sales tax is still coming in strong. It's at 96% of budget, about $900,000 year over year. And so we should with the May collection reach our budget, which is a good thing. So we'll have, we'll have that for the, for the month of May. It's about 14.6% year over year. That's down a little bit from what it was last month. It was about 14.9% last month, but still, as you can graphically see, still strong growth in sales tax. So for Mills Tax, it was a similar thing, a growth for the month, but at the same time, it's about $74,000 year over year, 87% of budget. So that's ahead of that 83% benchmark. So when we get through June, we should be right about at budget for Mills Tax. It is up a little bit, well, compared to last month, at 6.1% growth year over year. It was 5.5% last month. So transient occupancy, it was up for April, it's still down for the year. And so we're $34,000 below year over year through April. That's about 73.5% of the budget. We would want to be at 83%. So we are about 9.4% below. And so looking at, we will realistically, based on trend historical, see an uptick in May and June. So we will see if that gets us over the finish line on the budget, but it is still just coming in a little bit lower. Don't know rhyme or reason on that. A lot of that with short-term rentals, it depends on the booking company and the timing and collections of all of it.
Brian, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
One of the anecdotal factors that I look at was the harmful algae bloom breakout that we had, which really dampened activity for lodging and so forth last summer. So some of that, or maybe most of it, could be attributable to that.
It could. And you're exactly right. Anecdotally, we would say it probably had some level of impact. How much?
Right.
Difficult to say.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So switching to expenditures, for comparison graphically, we're a little bit down compared to April and prior year. But year over year, when you look through based on categories, we're, as we would anticipate based on inflation and other increases, we would be up a little bit compared to prior year in our major categories. Nothing that's sticking out that would be out of place where we would expect to be through April. As you saw kind of on the first slide with our general fund budget, we're still within budget. So we anticipated being at this level of spend for this point in time in the fiscal year. So health and welfare, to break that down, we usually try and segment that for you. You can see CSA's still up, social services is still up. The programs are about even, the social services on the left is what they're operating and so a lot of that's likely going to be more personnel-related because of the size of that is in their operating budget. So to show reserves, the only real change from this from last month is we updated the capital reserve for some obligations that the board had approved. So it's dropped to $745,000. That is going to be our balance. I think, you know, as we look towards, of course, any other capital needs, if you remember in our CIP, we have a little over a million dollars in one-time money that was adopted to be used for capital next year. So whether that comes from any combination of reserves or fund balance, that'll be something we'll bring to the board at a future date for appropriation. So economic update, the CPI did increase 3.4% for April, still above the 2% that Federal Reserve target. It was 3.5% in March, so it's still seeing an elevated level. So because of that, the Federal Reserve did not change its target funds rate, still about 5 and 1/4, 5 and 1/2%. The next meeting won't be till June 11th and 12th. So the latest update that I had seen is that the rate may come down some by the end of the calendar year, but it's not going to come down significantly for 2024. It sounds like at the current estimate of economic activity, it'll be 2025 calendar year before any other significant rate reductions may occur. So state budget update, we do have a budget at the state level now. So the General Assembly approved, the governor, they negotiated and agreed upon budget, they signed that. Couple of highlights that more significant probably to us as a locality is they eliminated the sales tax on digital services, so none of that will pass through. They did maintain the 3% cost of living increase, which we had included in our proposed budget the board adopted, so no real change there for us. But we are awaiting the projections on the impact of the school funding. The overall number looks to be fairly close to the original General Assembly passed number. There was additional money added for at-risk add-ons. So our hope is that with the 1.4 million that local match that the county provided, this board provided with the additional state money, that the schools will be able to fund year or two of their compensation plan. But waiting on additional information. So what will happen now that we have final numbers, as we get those, we will come to the board at your June 18th meeting, look to look for the final appropriation for all of the adopted budget, county and school budget, just to finalize that and be ready for July 1. Okay? So while I don't have it on the screen, I do have a couple of updates that were kind of new for us. So do want to let you know that we, the county or the school system was awarded the construction grant for the middle school project. So that's going to be about $5.6 million. That will eventually have to be a future appropriation. That will likely require a public hearing. And so we're working through that now. That's a very recent notice, so we're getting all the details of what that entails. But what that ultimately means for us is it's more grant money, which means less we have to borrow out of the literary loan, which means our debt service remains on a more manageable level. The other thing, which is some really good news, just yesterday, it became official that the county received an upgraded rating from Fitch. And so we are now double A-plus, which is one notch below triple A. So now we have the double A-plus for Fitch and S and P, and which are one notch below triple A, and then we are AA-two for Moody's, which they do a little different. But really, AA-one is one notch below triple A. But for Moody's, we were able to get a positive outlook at the last review. So we're trending toward being one notch below triple A across all three rating agencies. So we'll have something for you later in the week for some update, a memo, kind of break it down a little bit. But all of it is, usually it goes a couple of things. It's going to go to financial condition and management. Of course, it's going to look at our reserves and balances and how we balance our budget, less use of one-time money, but it also looks at economic conditions, looks at population growth, it's going to look at economic trends. So it's a positive sign for us that looks like we're doing things right, and so we achieved that upgrade. So we'll provide a little bit more information for you in the coming future, but wanted to provide that good news to you.
Mr. Chairman, I would add and remind the board, and Brian, confirm if I'm correct about this, but with that upgrade from Fitch, given that Fitch had announced earlier last year that they were going to be doing more scrutinization on rural localities, I think that's remarkable that we got an upgrade, and it speaks to the stability and veracity of all of the work that Finance Administration and the Board's doing.
Yes, ma'am. I think for the board, it would be a big congratulations and pat on your back for very sound fiscal management. So it's a kudos to all the actions this board and previous boards have taken. Yes, ma'am.
I think it speaks volumes to the board, but staff as well
Oh, yeah.
for being, watching over, being good stewards and watching the money, and the board making good decisions. It's working together all the way around. It's a plus. That's, that speaks good, especially with our county. I'm often asked a question, and I still don't know the answer, do we want to be triple A? But I know different things come with different, but it's a good feeling to be where we're at.
Yes, sir.
Good feeling, especially in today's world.
Very good position.
Anybody got any questions for Mr. Carter? Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brian, on page one, under fines and forfeitures, can you go into a little detail what that means? It's a two-hundred and thirty-eight percent increase.
It is. It's such a small amount for the overall, so it looks a little skews up, about thirty thousand. I'll have to look at that, Mr. Carter. I don't have a direct line item on that.
That's fine. I'm just curious. You can shoot me an email.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good report. Thank you. Mr. Sandy?
All right. Good afternoon. Such a tough act to follow behind that announcement. So what I want to shift gears a little bit and talk to you about the Smith Farm and just the activity relative to the Smith Farm, that we'd like to get your permission to move forward, kind of pick it back up and continue moving this effort forward. So I'll give you a little bit of background. I know we have a couple newer members, but just for the benefit of everybody, a little bit of background about what we're talking about when we talk about farm. So this was acquired by the county in 2010. It's about three hundred and ninety-five acres in the Union Hall District near the 4-H Center. The county initially purchased this property for a million dollars from Virginia Western, with the proceeds really going back to cover the cost of students in Franklin County going to community college. So it was kind of a win-win situation there. The property was really paid off in 2020, so it was kind of a ten years, a hundred thousand dollars a year, if I recall correctly, for how that was to be paid off. And again, that was kind of paid through scholarships, through Franklin County students. So 2020, that was paid off. There are deed restrictions that are associated with that property that restrict it to recreation, educational, preservation, and forest slash agricultural uses. And this property was previously noted as a good property for preservation. So this goes back to 2016. I know there were some conversations with previous boards about creating a stream, wetlands, and nutrient credit bank on this property. And that, what that would do is that would preserve and restore certain portions of this property, and then allowing that to be used as mitigation, so to help offset development costs for construction activities, whether those were county activities or non-county activities, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. But the whole idea was to create this bank that would produce these credits that could be utilized for development purposes. And so over the past couple of years, the environmental regulations have really evolved and put much more priority on these credits. And so as an example, if you're developing a site and you're paving the site that was previously a wooded site, there's going to be an impact that's going to be calculated. Strictly for nutrients would be the amount is really related to the amount of runoff that is generated on the property. And so with that, you can mitigate that through methods on-site with stormwater retention and stormwater quality work, or you can buy credits, and sometimes you can do a combination of both. But you can buy these credits. Let's just say your site is small, you don't really have the room to do some of this, and in some cases, doing those other improvements is actually more expensive in some cases than doing the credits. And so a lot of folks in the development world will opt to buy credits just to offset the mitigation. And so that's particularly on the nutrient side. If you impact stream beds, there's stream credits, and if you impact wetlands, there's wetland credits. So there's kind of three different pots of credits, if you will. And so again, over the last few years, as properties have developed, this has come more and more as a occurrence, more regular occurrence of needing these credits. And again, this would apply to private development as well as county development having to meet these environmental regulations. So back in 2016, we actually started the process with this property, looking at how we could do this mitigation bank and also do it in concert with recreational improvements. Again, going back to the deed restrictions of what we're limited to, we saw this as kind of a mutually beneficial kind of relationship where we could do the stream credits and also provide some recreational opportunities. So at that time, there were two efforts that kind of moved forward. One was to kind of really map out what those credits would look like and where the areas would be that would have to be preserved and how we would preserve those areas. And then with knowing that, then how could we develop some recreational amenities without impacting those areas? And so it was kind of two parallel efforts that were going on to look and identify all the potential uses on that property. And so some of the things, and I'll show you a map here in just a second, but there was a conceptual master plan that was developed and with a public park and a campground, a special event site, walking trails, multi-use trails, there were some lake access. So there were several different conceptual, and I'll reiterate that, they were very conceptual kind of ideas. But the whole idea was what could happen here and could be done that would not impact the areas that we would have to preserve if we did the mitigation bank. And so what we found and what we developed was, we found that we could really do both. We could really achieve both purposes on this property because of the size and where these, where the mitigation efforts would be. And with that, you guys recently approved a trail project just a month or two ago. Actually had an opening for that, and so that was one of the steps as well, where as that trail was developed, it was surveyed and made sure that, hey, this trail can't go through these areas that we might eventually look to preserve and use for this mitigation bank. And so that's one effort that was already underway and is already kind of in place. And I'll also note that currently, we do lease this property for agricultural purposes, and so there's a large portion of it that's still hay fields, there's still some cattle on there, and that lease is now, the original lease expired, now we're kind of on a month-to-month lease with that property owner to continue to do that. And again, it's kind of a mutually beneficial kind of thing where they can use it for hay production, our folks don't have to go out and cut the grass. And so it kind of helps kind of maintain the property and keep it in productive use. So I know this is going to be really hard to see, but this just gives you kind of a general idea of preserved areas kind of in the darker green in these areas, and then where there were some conceptual plans shown for recreation activities here and here, down at the water, as well as some trails throughout. Basically, the mitigation efforts will really look at these stream beds and restoring these stream beds. So best example I can kind of give you is many of you have probably seen some of the programs now where farmers have always had, their cattle have always had access right into the creek, and they just walk into the creek and do what they're going to do in the creek. And so a lot of people have gotten in a federal program that allows them to fence those areas out, restore those stream beds, plant trees. It's similar to this, this kind of work would be very similar to that, is what you'd be looking at is restoring the creek bed and then planting some of those trees around there to kind of restore. So in essence, you would preserve the stream bed, and then maybe a hundred feet on each side, you would kind of have a buffer, which would be vegetated with grass and probably some sort of trees would also be planted in there. And so these areas that are kind of identified here along these stream beds are where we would basically generate those credits on this property. And so depending on the different types of credits would be the different kind of designated areas, but again, there's those three pots of credits that I talked about before. And so this was work that was done back in 2016 to kind of identify where those areas are and roughly how many credits we think we can generate on this property. And I think what this told us is that there are substantial number of credits out there that can be seen from this work. And what I'll talk about here in just a minute is then, you know, the effort then is, do we want to develop this for just county's use, or do we want to look at possible other alternatives to work with these credits? And so as I mentioned earlier, these mitigation credits have really hit the market and have a higher value right now. They're certainly a valuable commodity. What we found recently is that there are few to zero credits in our watershed that are actually available right now. And we are restricted, well, not just us, but any development in this area is really restricted to obtaining credits within your watershed. And so there is an exception. You can go one watershed away, but as an example, we can't go to Northern Virginia and buy credits. We can only buy credits from kind of this area and this watershed. And so that's another limiting factor that has caused people to really not be able to find a lot of those credits. And so the availability of credits and the fact that they're, you know, in high demand have really kind of raised those prices up to a point where we feel like as a staff that it's a good opportunity to pick this back up and kind of move forward. And so what the county staff is proposing is that we develop an RFP, a Request for Proposals, to get proposals from a private banker. And when I say banker, it's really someone to manage this mitigation bank, not a financial banker per se, but someone that has experience in managing these type of mitigation banks. Because staff-wise, at the county level, we really don't have the number of staff or really the expertise of staff to really kind of go through all the permitting process, go through all the implementation, the maintenance, and all those kind of aspects to it. So what we would propose is that we develop a Request for Proposals and solicit those proposals from companies that do this sort of work to really have a turnkey operation, if you will, that they would come in, they would kind of do all the permitting work, do all the installation work, do all the maintenance work, and kind of put this bank into effect and in the process. So some of the activities that we would foresee them doing, and again, this could vary, and kind of the last point there is the most important point, I think, is all of these would be negotiable as we get into this process as far as what activities they would do for us and what activities we would retain and we would do. But as an example, some of the main buckets here are that they would do the approval and permitting. You know, this all has to go through Virginia DEQ and the Corps of Engineers, and it has to be approved through all those agencies as an approved bank. They would be responsible for all the additional design work that may be required, the actual construction, so actually going in and physically altering those stream beds and rebuilding those, planting the trees, doing all those things that are part of that effort. And then after you do that, making sure all the trees live and make sure that there isn't, you know, erosion problems and all these various things that they would do after construction, and then continuing to maintain those. So again, if two years from now, some of the trees died, they would be the ones to come back in and replant those trees, as well as overall project management. And then the final piece would be the sales and marketing piece. And so what we would propose is that this bank would be run by a third party. We would still maintain the ownership of the property. They would just be responsible for maintaining the bank. And we would have the opportunity to then put those credits out on the open market and generate revenue from any of those excess credits that may be generated on the property. And so what I would propose as we go through a negotiation process is that the county would probably want to retain some of those credits for county projects. You know, whether we're building a new building or we're doing, building a road, whatever it is, a development project, collection site, you name it, any of those activities we see on the horizon, I think we would want to hold back a certain number of those credits to help us there. But then I think from everything that I've seen so far is that I think there is an excess of credits that we could put some of these credits out on the open market and be able to generate some revenue back to the general fund or back into the Smith Farm capital improvements. But that would be a board decision of how to reinvest or how to reuse those revenues. But I think the point would be, I think there are ample opportunities to generate some revenues from these credits and then put those back into capital projects at the county level. So we anticipate that the approval and permitting process and getting this all in place is probably at least a two-year process. And so again, we kind of want to, if this is the direction the board would like to go, we'd kind of like to get this process to the next level, get it out there, get those proposals in and start collecting those proposals and start being able to select the person we would like to work with, the company we'd like to work with, and then be able to negotiate kind of those terms. And certainly, all that would come back to this board, and this board would certainly be part of those discussions and obviously part of those approvals as well. And that would probably be a couple of months from now. We would be coming back to you with that information. And then if we award it, that's when we're still looking at probably a two-year project to actually get this in place, get it established, and kind of have all those credits then available for sale and use. So again, kind of our recommendation would be that we work, staff working with the county attorney's office to really develop that Request for Proposals. So let's solicit those proposals for probably sixty days or so, get those proposals back in, be able to interview those folks that have submitted proposals and come back to you with a recommendation in several months on, you know, a third party that we could work with to start to develop this mitigation bank. And so that's kind of a brief summary. I'm sure there's other questions you may have, and I'll be happy to try to answer those. I guess I will note that I know Paul and his staff, the Parks and Rec Department, are kind of actively talking with folks about revisions to that master plan. Again, this master plan was nearly ten years ago now, and so there's been some changes and some new thinking, I think, about different opportunities out there. And so I know they're going through kind of a process to reevaluate and collect some additional feedback on future recreational uses on this property as well. So, but happy to try to answer any questions if--
Anybody got any questions for Mr. Sandy? Go ahead.
Mr. Sandy, this third party that we're talking about including on this, how are they compensated?
How would they be compensated? I think that could work a lot of different ways. One way that I've heard from some of the companies that we've talked to is that they would be willing to do a lot of the capital investment and likely all the capital investment to make this work. So that would be the plan development, all the actual construction work. What they would seek is once we start selling those credits, is that they would get reimbursed for their actual expenses to do the work. Then once that, those expenses are paid off, then there would be some sort of mutual agreement to split the revenues. And that's really, all that is negotiable, but I think that's one way that that could work. The county could certainly partner with some of these required improvements along the way if the county wanted to. So I think there's multiple ways it could be crafted, but one of the ways I've heard is that the third party would likely be able to kind of carry all those initial capital expenses and then look to just get paid back as those revenues come in for the property. So in that sense, the county is really not having to front any money, you know, upfront. So, in that sense, the county is really not having to front any money, you know, upfront in that particular case. So, again, all of it's kind of negotiable, so, you know, it could look a lot of different ways, but that's just one opportunity that would be there. One other note I should mention is, from everything I've gathered and understood about this process is if the county continues to manage and develop this bank, then we are not eligible to sell those on the open market. They can only be used for our use. So, the other reason, I think, to kind of go with a third party is it gives us that, more of that flexibility to be able to save some for herself, but then also be able to sell some of those on the open. So, I think I failed to mention that before. But that's a key part for me is just, it gives you a lot more flexibility, I believe, if we do partner with the third party.
Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Tatum sort of asked my question, I think, being able to sell that on the open market, that's a big decision dealmaker there for me. But I had a couple of comments I hope staff will pass on to Parks and Rec. When they're working on this revision of the master plan, that house needs to be addressed and we need to start utilizing that house and it's starting to deteriorate and there needs to be some cleanup. And when I was at Ms. Dillon's trail, had some discussion there with Parks and Rec. I understand there's a quantity of car tires on that property. That needs to be cleaned up and before we lose this lease with the gentleman, and I assume he's responsible for that, we need to get those tires taken off that property.
I think Brandy's staff and Parks and Rec, I think, are already working on that. So, I don't know if you want to address that?
We have been in contact with the property owner and he is claiming that those tires were on the property before he began his lease.
Of course.
So, at this point, we are talking with Public Works to see what the cost would be to have a company come in, remove the tires, dispose of them properly, since it's going to be very difficult to prove when the tires were placed on the property.
Of course. Well, thank you.
Of course. Any more questions for Mr. Sandy? Okay, Mr. Quinn.
I have a couple of things, Steve. So, first, I really like outsourcing this function because I know it takes a lot of specialized knowledge both to execute it and to get these credits back. So, I like, I really like that idea at first. And then, secondly, it seems so often, I've only been here four months, but so frequently we're just getting one bid. And I really like going out to bid and making things competitive, but then, when you only get one bid, it's kind of disappointing. And so, rather than kind of complaining on the backend that we only got one bid, it makes me want to be more proactive on the front end of something like this and figure out, well, how can we get two bids? Even if you have two bids, it's awesome, right? And so, I'm not, I really don't know what it is. People don't want to work in Franklin County or we don't advertise it well or they think it's wired for somebody else to win, so they don't want to bid on it. I really have no idea why, but it would be really nice to figure out how you could at least get two bidders on it. And then, I worked a little bit with Paul on the agenda for tonight with some ideas on what he could share with the audience. And this would actually be an awesome thing to add to the agenda. I didn't realize this was going on until now this meeting, but this would, I think the people would really like seeing what you're doing there to preserve those stream areas. It'll improve water quality in that area. You won't have as much sediment runoff. It's just preserving that property. So, it's, I think he's going to encounter some resistance with what he wants to do tonight and this would be a way of softening some of that. I don't know if there's a way to get the word, I mean, I could call him even during our break, but this is a really neat thing for him to bring up. And then, the last thing was, you touched on it, but I think it'd be really nice for some of this money to go back into developing the recreational facilities because this is going to be an expensive operation and it's just so hard to get county money for things like this. It would be nice to be able to earmark a portion of the revenue that we're getting from this property to go back into investing in the property to make the recreational facilities that we need. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
And I'll just address the bid part is, this is kind of specialized, but what we will do is we'll be reaching out to DEQ and the Corps and engineering firms that have experience with this to try to solicit as many bids as we can get, you know, because, yeah, we would like to have at least two options to kind of compare and work with.
Anybody else got any questions for Steve? I don't have any questions, but I got a comment to make. Mr. Sandy, you stated a while ago that there was a need for these credits. I think right now, unless you know something that we don't, I think this is way too premature for us to start selling credits when we may need this for future development. There's no way I, unless you know something I don't know and the rest of this board doesn't know, we don't know future development. And I'm not saying that there might not be a need there, but I don't understand why in today's economy, today's world, we need to sell something that we really don't need to sell. And that's my point now. I think as far as having the management to come in to do this, to eliminate pressure off a stack is okay, that's one thing. But I don't think we need to start selling credits to outsiders. I know they're still in the, in this area, you can't go outside the way I understood it a while ago of wherever the watershed is, but I don't see where we need to be selling this now and need the money. The county can always use money, but we just had a great, a great report from Mr. Carter, you know, on our credit ratings and everything. But I do not see the need or the urgency to do that now. So, with that being said, I'm not really for this project. I'm not really for selling anything that we may need in the future when we don't know what the future holds today and we may end up selling something that we're going to be regretting later. So, that's how I feel about that. Anybody else did that, add anything? What anybody say? Go ahead.
I would like to, if there's some way that we could put together, and we need to work on this anyway, you know, our five-year and 10-year plan, strategic plan, you know, as far as capital and see if we can get some ideas of what our needs may be and get some ideas, just take for instance, the Summit View Business Park. The development out there, if we need credit for out there, how does it, I mean, would it take half of this? Would it take 10%? Would it take 5%? You know, if we, we need some education. We need to know how far, you know, how much credit are we talking about being available down there and how far does that credit go, you know? I have no idea. So, that's why we rely on y'all to educate us and let us know, you know, we might, you might come in and say, hey, from all indications with this, we'd be good to go for the next 50 years of foresee, you know, foreseeable construction and development and only need a third. So, that would open up two-thirds of it that we could sell. But we need some education. We need to know if we can get that.
Mr. Quinn?
I would just add, I think, running to a couple of points. One is, I think Steve believes that we'll have way more credits than you would, you could ever possibly use within the county. And so, he envisions that you have a pool of credits much greater than we could ever use. And the second part is that the RFP process that I think you're proposing isn't to instantly sell the credits. It's really going to help you learn a lot more about the whole process and what's really possible. And then, the last comment I'd make about it is that some of these credits won't be available until you make a capital investment, like planting the trees along the stream. And so, I think there's a benefit to selling some of these credits just to get the money to be able to generate more credits because of the capital and we don't want to fund the capital, I don't think.
I'd be happy to just share a couple of thoughts, you know, so, I think it's, we can do some education. I think it's really difficult, I'll use a 911 center, for example, you know, if we use the existing building, the former library versus building a new site, there's a big difference there because obviously we have no environmental impacts if we use an existing structure. So, that's some of the challenges we would have in kind of estimating. So, it really kind of depends, it's really dependent on what we end up doing for a lot of these different facilities. But certainly, certainly would encourage that we would retain some portion of those for those uses. You know, I also think, once we start here and we get into this work, I think we would also find that there may be some other opportunities in the county for other properties. We're going to hear about some other properties today that already have restrictions on them as well. There may be some other opportunities to create additional banks, you know, for the county. And so, I think a lot of that will kind of go into the discussion, I think, to Mr. Thompson's concerns. Again, I think we can retain some for our use. I think if we wanted to, we could even craft this such that we only sell credits to Franklin County projects. I mean, I think it's kind of wide open as far as when you get into the negotiation part, you know, maybe we only sell a private development within Franklin County. Now, some of the challenges there is going to limit the market, obviously, and some of the revenue opportunities may be limited by that, but I think all of that is kind of potentially on the table as far as we go forward with negotiations and development. And then, I'll just kind of echo what Mr. Quinn said is, you know, really until, we really can't utilize any of these either for our use or somebody else unless we kind of get the process moving to actually start planting the trees and preserve those areas. So, again, not forcing anybody to make a decision today, but I just, you know, I think that's kind of what happened back in 2016 was maybe we were a little reluctant maybe to move forward in one direction or the other. And so, here we are, almost, you know, eight or 10 years, you know, where we've kind of not moved forward on it. So, I would just encourage us, you know, if we can kind of move forward in some effort to either for our use or for, you know, developing it with this third party, I think would be a good opportunity to move forward.
Anybody else got any?
I'm sorry. So, Mr. Sandy, would it be fair enough to say that the why now versus waiting is a large part of that rationale due to the fact of what the market's doing and what the sale of those credits? We could have a measurable increase perhaps and result?
Of cour-, yeah, of course, now, if we had them, would be great to have them right now.
Right.
And so, two years from now, maybe it looks a lot different, but maybe it looks a lot worse as far as, you know, the value might actually look even more better, even more better, even better two years from now than it does now. But it's a volatile market, so it could also go down. That's just something we have to be aware of as we go through the process as well. But what we're seeing now is there are no available credits that are out there on the market. And so, the sooner I feel like we can get these out there for our use or for other use, I think is going to be to our benefit either way to go ahead and get this in place, you know, and start that effort to get it in place.
Is there an approximate amount that you would have in mind, ballpark?
For?
For the sale of the credits? I mean, what could we be looking at?
It's going to vary because, again, there's those three different pots.
Yes.
So, the value for each pot is different. And so, it could be the total amount of credits based on kind of the current amounts could be $5 to $6 million of value. And again, that's just, that's a very general estimate right now. And all of that is market-driven, all of that is going to depend on the cost to develop, to actually develop it and do the preservation and all of those things. But based on the credits that are out there now, you know, it's somewhere in that ballpark, we feel like.
And so, based upon Mr. Tatum and Mr. Quinn's observations, do you feel that even if we, as a board, are going to be getting into our strategic planning efforts and being more deliberate, would you, you know kind of the scope that our strat planning's been in, you know, kind of the environment we're living in for five to 10 years, would you say that the amount of credits there are more than we would need, given the things that we know about today?
Correct, I would, yeah.
Are there more than enough or enough?
I think there are more than enough for what we have currently planned, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And again, obviously, that depends on, you know, what ultimately happens for development sites, you know, whether they're rebuilds of existing buildings, existing properties, or if we happen to get into a property that's all wetlands, you know, obviously, that's going to have a big impact. But I think just assuming kind of regular use, if you will, and regular development of new property based on what we have planned, I think we have excess credits, yeah. And so, my initial thought would be maybe to hold 25% of those back for our use, just as a ballpark number, you know, initially. And then, as we move through time, we can, you know, probably adjust that if we need to. And again, all of that is kind of negotiable with who this third party is and how we end up developing this process.
Yeah, and I would just concur that if the board chooses to move forward with this, that I really think any future fund should be specifically earmarked. Once we enter into this and there's an actuality of revenue received, that they be earmarked and not just money coming into the general fund. Because I think we've got enough need hanging out there that this could really help offset some of the larger capital needs that we have. Do you agree with that?
Sure, but, yeah. I mean, that's ultimately a board decision of, you know, if you want to just let any of those funds go in the general fund or specifically earmark those, that'd be something clearly the board could do at a future time.
But I'm thinking correctly in terms of the earmarking, perhaps?
I think it, I think the nexus makes sense with utilizing it for capital improvements on this property. I think that makes sense, but it doesn't have to be that way. I mean, you know, I think the board could choose to use that revenue in any way they wanted to.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with a lot of the comments, but I look at this as an investment in the future, an asset for the county. And I think it's just another arrow we have in our quiver and I think without getting into the weeds, we can sort of tailor this as we go along. And I'm for it.
I'm for it as well, but I think to talk about any of the funds or anything is preliminary until we know what we have there. There's a whole lot, who knows what it could be.
Mr. Jameson, you got any comment?
I'm for it. I think it's a good thing and it sounds like, like Steve said, we can tailor this as we go along and all of this negotiation now, but I believe we do need to start on it, you know, get moving on it.
I would, I'd like to see this, I'd like to see this tabled until our work session in June, until we can have a work session and work out some of these questions. We're only talking a month and I certainly hate to see us, seems like I'm the Lone Ranger here. But I feel like that we are selling something, giving something away, selling something that we have no way of knowing now how much the need or the market is. I think we need to keep this in the county for the time being and now for some development in the county, in the county, county development. I've got no reservations, hesitations at all of selling credits or giving them credits for within the county. But to start selling stuff outside of our county, I got a hard problem with this, big problem. And I would like to see this tabled until we can have a work session and talk about some of this stuff and educate ourselves, as Mr. Tatum said, until our June, our Thursday work session. Because I think if we start anything today is premature. I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed at all of getting an outside group to come in to manage. I'm just, I'm just opposed to selling anything in our county today outside our county. So...
I don't think we're, I don't think we're voting on this to sell anything. If it is, I'm misled. I think we're just, pretty much just approving to put out an RFP to get somebody in here to let us know what we do have. I don't think we're voting here to sell anything.
I understand that and I agree with what you're saying, but I still don't know what would hurt to table this until June work session so that we can get educated more on what's going on. Now, if you want to, if you want to do the RFP and do that and go ahead and, to me, I don't see the urgency in this project. I think we got, I think we got time and when we get quick and jump the gun, that's when we start making mistakes. I agree. What are we going to do with the money if we sell any? What are we going to do here and how are we going to do it? We need to work, I think this thing, these things need to be worked out prior to anything else. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sandy, is it if we delay the putting out this RFP, is that gonna, how's that gonna affect the process or is that going to be a problem?
We've waited this long, I mean, you know, another month, I don't think is going to kill it. I think, I think you could always move forward with it, and I think you could still have that discussion in June about those things you want to see in the RFP. You know, we can start that work, and then you guys can also have a discussion about, these are some of the things we really want to see in the proposals. You know, we want to know that, you know, we're able to maintain a certain amount of these credits or that we're able to, you know, with the people that are submitting the proposals, would they want to partner with us if those credits were only available in Franklin County, you know? And some, some of that may affect their proposal, you know? They may say, "Well, if we can't put them out on the open market, then we don't want to submit a proposal" because that's where we're going to generate the most revenue. You know, I don't know what those proposals will look like. So, if we have specific criteria that we want to add in there, we probably need to know that before we put out the RFP. But the thinking really here was, give us the proposals of what you think as the third party would work best for this property, and then that's what we would come and present to you. And then, we would be looking for a recommendation at that point on developing those specifics and developing that partnership and developing that contract for those. So, waiting a month doesn't necessarily hurt anything, but I don't think, I don't think that we couldn't move forward with starting to develop the RFP. It's going to take us probably two months to develop it and get it out on the street. You know, maybe a month, but it'll take us a little while to get it out on the street. And then, it'll probably be another two months to get those proposals back. So, we're still, we still have a couple of months before we actually have anything to kind of react to.
Well, my fear is if we, if we restrict this RFP down too tight, then people aren't going to bid on it. I think we should put the RFP out, see what we get, and then we can change it or do whatever as we move forward.
Mr. Chairman, I would also, if I may echo...
Sure.
I don't see any reason, I certainly hear concurrence from the board in support of moving forward with trying to start moving towards the mitigation bank. But I don't see any reason why we can't simultaneously do what our chairman is asking to just kind of roll our sleeves up a little bit, but go ahead and get the motion passed tonight so that we can be working in earnest, because I do hear concurrence from the board that we want to move in that direction. But there's no finality, you know, with this motion, all of that work is ahead.
Correct, I would agree, I would agree. And I would just add, kind of to Mr. Carter's point and even Mr. Quinn's point earlier, I think we're going to be, I feel like, we'll receive better proposals if we kind of leave it open at this point.
Yes.
And then, I think then we can narrow in, narrow down on, well, this is a must for us, you know? We have to have this, or, you know, we want to reserve this many credits. I think that's the point then where we have that conversation that this is a deal breaker for us. We have to have this, or we have to have that. But I think, I think, just me personally, I feel like we're going to be better off to kind of leave it open, a little bit open-ended at the beginning to be able to generate those proposals and ideas, because there's probably ideas that I certainly haven't thought of, going back to the revenue sharing or, you know, some of those sort of ideas that they may have good experience with that work somewhere else that just we're not aware of and haven't seen that into effect. Again, because the whole thing here is we don't have experience dealing with these kind of banks, and so, we're really looking for that expertise from a third party to kind of help us get there. So, yes, this is not the final at all, this is really just the beginning, in my mind, to kind of get us moving in that direction.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to offer a motion whenever you're ready.
Go ahead.
I would make a motion that we authorize staff to work with the county attorney to develop the necessary RFP documents to begin the process to advertise for the solicitation of possible development proposals for the county to partner with a third party to develop, own and operate one or more mitigation banks on the Smith Farm in accordance with the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Guidelines. In addition, that the board wishes to engage in some informative work sessions in the near term to prepare for forward progress on this matter.
Second.
Second. Madam Court, we do a roll call.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
No. I'll, in our June work session, this primary is number one.
Yes, sir.
Plenty of time for discussion, not 15 other things after it.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Moving on now, Mr. Ross.
All right, good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. This afternoon, I'm going to be doing a quick presentation on the disposition of some county-owned properties. And just a bit of a history on these properties. In 2019, staff identified 19 properties for the potential sale or lease. And as part of the disposition of properties, we are required to hold a public hearing. And that public hearing was held in December 2019 for those 19 properties. Since that time, we have not sold any of those properties. So, we have revisited the list that, just to hopefully narrow it down a little bit, identify some of the properties that we still feel would be good candidates for either a sale or a lease, given their current usage. So, on the map that's on this slide and also the one that's in your agenda packet, the properties, which there are nine of them that are listed in green, are the ones that we've identified for possible sale with the items in brown being ones that we are using at this point, or properties such as, like Summit View and the Commerce Center, where they are actively marketed through economic development. So, looking very quickly at the properties that were identified, properties eight and nine, those are jointly owned with the town of Rocky Mountain. The county has a 75% undivided interest in those properties with the town having a 25% undivided interest. They were acquired from Majocraft in 2009. Parcel eight is 13.15 acres and has an assessed value of $296,100. Parcel nine is 3.31 acres with a value of $120,000. Both of these properties are zoned M2, which is industrial general. And they are dissected by the 220 North Bypass Ramp, with the properties terminating at Norfolk Southers 100-foot right-of-way. The properties that are between that right-of-way and 40 East are owned by the state. Property number 10 is in the Union Hall Election District. It was acquired in 2008 and is one acre in size. It has an assessed value of $90,000 and is zoned A1. The only restriction that I was able to find during my deed research is that there is a flowage easement that was granted to Appalachian Power Company in 1960. Properties 11 through 14 are in the Boone District, and they're located off Windy Gap Drive. They were acquired in 2009 from the North Franklin County Park Corporation. Parcel 11 is 2.24 acres with a value of $11,200. Parcel 12 is 2.32 acres with a value of $11,600. Parcel 13 has 2.5 acres with a $12,500 value. And finally, parcel 14 is 1.83 acres with a value of $9,200. All four of the properties are zoned A1, and there are several deed restrictions in place. There's a 50-foot right-of-way and 100-foot diameter turnaround for Windy Gap Drive. No building or structure may be erected which will obstruct the view of property owners across the street. Windy Gap Drive owners may trim or remove trees blocking their view. And there's a 50-foot right-of-way reserved for the Hamrix, which was one of the parties in the original deed. Finally, and probably the most significant restriction on this is that the properties must be used for a public park.
Mr. Ross, are there timber on those properties that could be harvested if it can't be sold?
I would have to double-check. The aerial shot looks like there would be, but I would have to double-check.
There's not very much timber.
I was going to say, I don't know what the, what's tree species.
There's a lot of, one of the guys, one over there is a project for an Eagle Scout. Tried to clean it up. There's been a lot of dumping over there, the previous owner's concrete. It's, it's, to be perfectly honest, it's not a very valuable piece, especially with that restriction that's on it. A lot of times, I've said this before, it's been said in these meetings, a lot of times somebody gives you something, that certainly means it's a good idea.
Okay, moving on to property...
Go ahead, Ms. Ross.
I'm sorry. Moving on to property 15, which is adjacent to the properties 11 through 14 and fronts Cooper's Cove Road. Again, it is in the Boone District and was acquired in 2009 from the North Franklin County Park Corporation. It's just a little over 11 acres and has an assessed value of $55,700. It's zoned A1, and again, has the deed restriction that it must be used as a public park. And the final property, which is number 16 on your map, is in the Gills Creek District, and it was acquired in 1999. It's 10.47 acres with an assessed value of $86,800. It is zoned A1, and there is a deed restriction that the property is to be developed, maintained, used by the County of Franklin as a public park recreational facility with related facilities and shall not be used for any other purposes. Just a quick overview on the process, if we were to choose to sell these properties, staff has explored a couple or a few different options. The first would be soliciting sealed bids for the properties. We could do RFP for real estate broker services, or we can engage an attorney at law. This would be similar to how we handle delinquent tax sales. And if we were to choose that route, the attorney could include these as part of a delinquent tax sale to generate more interest because we would have additional parcels. The attorney would advertise on the newspaper three times. An email will be sent to the attorney's mailing list. And as far as how they would be compensated, state code allows for the attorney to collect 5% of gross sales price, or it could be handled hourly, it would be negotiable. If we were to handle this separately from a tax sale, it could be done in approximately 60 days. If it was included with an existing tax sale, it'd be more around the timeframe of 45 days. So, the path moving forward, the board can choose to approve these nine properties that have been selected for consideration for sale. We'll need to confirm the method to be used to sell the properties. And finally, we need to establish any guidelines for the sales that you guys would like in place, like what would be the minimal price, and so on. I'll be happy to answer any questions with this, or I can move on to Steve, who's going to handle some tower asset.
Ms. Ross, I have a question for you.
Okay.
Tell me the definition of a park, meaning, does that have to be a county park? Or could an individual buy that piece of property and put like, putt-putt in there? Make that like a park or a business for like a dog park? That's been talked about a whole lot. Or does the definition of a park mean a county-operated park with swings and ball fields and stuff?
That is a question that I asked Mr. Popovich in Mr. Glenn's office, and we are kind of working through the details on that right now as to what would define the park and if a private owner could own it and choose not to develop it. As long as it wasn't developed, is that still considered in line with the deed restrictions?
But does it include though if somebody buys it and puts something in there, a private business, like a dog park or a putt-putt or something of that nature?
Again, I think we'll need a little bit of clarification, and that was kind of the question I was asking Mr. Glenn's office, just to confirm what constitutes a public park.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Brandy, good afternoon, just two questions if I may. The public hearing that was held back in 2019, is there statute of limitations that allows us to still maintain that as meeting the rigor of public hearing for this purpose?
I'm going to look at Mr. Glenn on this one. Okay, so there is no statute of limitations on that?
Okay. The other thing, the property that has the AEP easement on it, is there a need to get that AEP easement vacated prior to sale?
I think it would be up to the purchasers to whether they'd want that vacated. If, my understanding of removing deed restrictions is that we would have to go back to the original party that placed the restriction and kind of have them be in agreement that we could remove that. That's another process we're looking through right now, if there is any ability to remove some of these deed restrictions that would allow us to sell the property in a different manner.
Thank you, Brandy.
You're welcome.
Ms. Quinn?
I have a couple of points. So, on property 10, it's a little hard to tell from the overview. I'm wondering, is there any lake frontage on that, or is it completely landlocked? From the picture, it looks landlocked, but you might know from the deed. You could put the picture up too, that would be helpful again, that one. So, it doesn't look like it touches the water. I was just curious if it's, if it has any actual lake frontage.
I think when we discussed this before, it does have lake frontage.
It does.
It does.
It does, okay. So, yeah, given that it does, it seems like it could be worth more than that, but you'd find out when you put it out to bid. It seems like it'd be worth more than $90,000. So, anyway, that, so thank you for answering that question, that was question one.
Yes, sir.
The second comment that I'll make that I think is interesting for all these properties, and it's based on, I did a lot of research on this church property that I brought up in the last meeting. And one of the interesting things I found is that the county records for that show it as 1.2 acres. And in fact, I confirmed through Cornerstone Survey that it's really 0.51 acres. So, it's 40% of the size of what we thought it was. And so, I've learned, and again, this is for the benefit of the board, if a property has been surveyed, we know with certainty the size of the property. If it has not been surveyed, it's an estimate. And the estimate isn't necessarily close, as I found with this property. It was, it's less than half of the size, and so, maybe some are twice as big and some are half the size. And so, I was a little concerned about that because as we sell these, if the acreage isn't correct and we know it's not correct, it feels like there could be somewhat of a risk unless you're simply selling it kind of buyer beware. This is all we have, and we'll give that, and it's up to you to investigate this and determine that it really isn't the right acreage. But one thought I had, short of doing a survey, which is expensive, you could just have one of the staff members who are GIS experts do a little extent on this, on a base map. And within less than five minutes, you would draw a circle around this, and you'd realize, oh, yeah, I'm kind of close. This one is, you know, 1.1 or it's 0.9, at least you're close, you know? It's not, you're not off by twofold, right? And so, so out of all that, my point to you would be that it would be interesting to look at these properties and figure out which ones already had a survey. Okay, put those aside, you know the acreage is correct. But the ones that don't have a survey, if any of them are like that, it would be interesting to do a GIS, a five-minute GIS process and see if your acreage is correct. Because I think it would be better to disclose that to a buyer when it's easy to figure out, and there could be substantial differences in the size of the property. So, then, moving on, a few of the properties, as Ronnie pointed out, have the, they're restricted to a public park. And so, I'm wondering, do we really believe that there'll be value for those? Do you think that somebody will buy that on the open market? I mean, it's awesome if they do, but are you optimistic that you'll be able to sell a piece of property that has that deed restriction to somebody, to a private party?
In all honesty, there will be less interest. I feel like there may be some people that may be interested if the property is located adjacent to theirs, and maybe they want it, they could put it in a conservation easement or something like that. But it will limit the amount of people that are interested in the property if there's a restriction on it that has to be used as a public park.
Thank you, that's what I would have expected. And then, my last comment, I'm wondering how long these deed limitations last, if they last into perpetuity? And the reason I bring this up is I always thought deed limitations lasted into perpetuity, but there was a really interesting case Jim might know about regarding the... But there was a really interesting case, um, Jim might know about regarding a piece of property that was donated to the city of Richmond for the purpose of putting a Confederate statue there. And, uh, it all, it went all the way up to the Supreme Court. And the Supreme Court, uh, determined that that deed restriction was only in force as long as the original donator of the property was still alive. The heirs could no longer enforce that deed restriction. And so it was kind of, it was shocking to me that deed restrictions could go away. I really thought they lived into perpetuity. But I'm wondering for these that have this deed restriction, um, do you know if they're into perpetuity or not?
Um, I'm certainly not, um, a real estate attorney. Um, I think we would have to go deed by deed and just look at how it was worded to see if, if it is the case that, um, it would be into perpetuity or if it ended when, um, the person that, that, I guess enforced that easement passes away. My assumption is that it would be in perpetuity, but I can certainly, I'll certainly have to have an attorney look at that before I can say that for sure.
Okay, and then the last point for these various properties that are deed restricted. Um, I assume the counties made a decision that we're not interested in acquiring these or maintaining them and putting a public park there. We've made that decision and, and that's why we're selling them?
Um, I'll defer a little bit to that, to Mr. Whitlow. Um, but we have no active plans on these properties, um, to build parks. Um, would they make a good place for a specific park perhaps? But, um, that was a decision that was made when these properties were identified in twenty nineteen.
Yeah, um, Mr. Quinn, you know, to answer, to answer that question. Um, the park at Windy Gap, the, the North Park and so forth, those, um, parcels there. Um, discussions with staff and Mr. Chapman's in the room is Parks and Recreation Director. There hasn't been an active push to develop that park specifically because of the lay of the land, if you will. It's, it's, um, got, as I understand, it's got a lot of topographic complications to it.
Really?
Um, uh, and, and so, um, that specific park, I, I think the, the thought at the time, uh, because that park is in the north area of the county. Uh, the Windy Gap Elementary School was, of course, developed and has a playground and the use of the public for, for that specific park when, when school's not in session, if you will, kind of provides recreation in that area was kind of the thought. Uh, the other property, uh, and Ms. Ross and I had this conversation and, uh, it goes back to your other question, Mr. Quinn, which is the, is the correct question regarding the deeds and perpetuity and so forth for public park. And then Mr. Thompson's question about this public park mean county per se. Um, the, the property, uh, the deed, the language in the deed, uh, as we understand for the property in Gills Creek specifically says Franklin County, um, public recreation or, or to be used by Franklin County for a public park. I think that one has more specificity to it, um, which would, would likely limit it, you know, to the county specifically. But, uh, as already been said, without some further legal, uh, digging, if you will. Uh, and we have had discussions with Mr. Gwen, uh, earlier today and, and his office and helping us dig a little bit further to answer these questions, I think is, is needed.
This, this piece of property here, Mr. Quinn, on Cooper's Cove Road. It's Billygate property. I don't know why, I don't know why it was accepted to begin with. And if the county went over and spent, and I'm telling you, hundreds of thousands of dollars to develop it. Because that's what it's gonna take. It's gonna end up, once it's found out, it's gonna end up as, uh, Run Oak City and Run Oak County. It's gonna end up with drug activity, drinking. And that's where it is because of its remote location. When you come down Windy Gap Mountain, just to tell you where it is, where the Franklin County, Run Oak County line is. You all know where that is. There's a road that goes up the hill. Part of that is shared with Run Oak County, part of it was up here to the top where these houses are. That's where that is. And this comes right down over here into the Cooper's Cove Road. Probably, I'm gonna say three quarters to a mile off of one sixteen. And that, that property right there, that's, my opinion, Ronnie Thompson's opinion, is worthless property.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask Mr. Whitlow a question? Uh, Mr. Whitlow, um, with regard to kind of the questions and observations that's been put on the table. Um, and I'm looking at a draft motion. Um, are we ready to approve the list of these properties? Um, and there's due diligence attached to this motion, um, for disposition and all. But is this premature, um, in terms of the types of questions that the board has at this point? Um, I'm wondering whether the things that we're inquiring, inquiring about will be taken care of within the confines of that motion or whether we need to table it?
That, that is the correct question, Ms. Smith. Um, given the fact that, you know, several of these deed restrictions, I think staff would advise. We, we need these legal questions answered in terms of, um, the deed restrictions. The public park question is, is our chairman had to ask, what is public park? Does that mean county or not? That said, there are a couple, um, on the property, uh, or on the list. Uh, specifically, um, the, the lakefront property there. Um, that may be the only one, Brandy. I think there's a couple of others. Uh, I think, once we bring that information back and vet that, um, if that's the pleasure of the board, back, back to the board to have that information from Mr. Gwen's office, I think that I, that I answer a lot of questions. Um, but I also think, uh, that's previously been stated. Um, if in fact, as an example, um, the parcels that say for public park and, and Ms. Ross mentioned, um, there may be an adjoining property owner that may have an interest. Um, and so we're not gonna know that, you know, until we put that out there. So I do think, uh, it, it, it's important that, you know, we put the properties out there to see if there's any, um, interest. Uh, but before we do so, to hear back, um, possibly from our county attorney, if that's the pleasure of the board.
So, so Chris, it just makes me wonder, out of the list of nine, are, are there one or more where it's very clean? And we could turn those over to sell and the others that have a lot of questions, you, you table those? Is, is, does it make sense to divide them into groups?
I, I, I think so, Mr. Quinn. I think it's a, it's a great suggestion. You know, you're looking at the, um, parcels in the map and that one parcel may be the, the, the one specifically in the Union Hall District, um, Mr. Quinn. And that, that's, or, um, the one there, I, I forget which property, Brandy, the, the lake, um, uh, property there. And, and you had asked the question regarding restricted access. I, I do think there, it's lakefront access, but I do think that parcel, if memory serves me correct, is restricted in terms of road frontage. So there are some, um, even limitations there. However, there may be an adjacent property owner that potentially, um, would have interest in that parcel. So to answer your question, out of all of the properties specifically, that will probably is the most free and unencumbered. Uh, the couple of others, the ones, um, uh, with jointly owned with the town of Rocky Mount, uh, that will take some further vetting with the town. Um, but, um, that specific one, uh, looking at the list, i- is likely the one that's most free and unencumbered at this point.
That, is that number ten?
Yes, yes, Ms. Smith.
Ms. Ross, do you know where, where the road is to get into number ten? Is that the, the little white dots are houses, are they not?
I have not been down to that property. I would have to see where, if it is in fact landlocked.
Mr. Chairman, if I remember correctly, when we discussed that before.
We discussed that, it is.
I think it went through Mr. Smith's property, but there, there would be, have to be an easement there.
Right, there's no reason to, it isn't.
Trailers, like a trailer park campground.
And the, uh, Capital Action Power Company, uh, easement, was it a, a ditch through it, overflow ditch?
Um, I'll have to look back through the original deed.
Uh.
It's a.
It's a flow of easement.
Just a ditch, drainage ditch or something.
The short line.
Oh, the actual lake, okay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Brandy, so this list was come up with, you said, in two thousand nineteen?
Correct.
But as far as holding and listing for sale, is that something you all came up with recently?
Uh, within the, the last few weeks, we have reviewed the list, looking at properties that were either unencumbered or if there was a structure on it that we didn't have somebody leasing the property, uh, those were eliminated, uh, from the list for just this phase.
I have a question as far as number six, and I'm very familiar with that. I know where it is. And I understand we own all the land around it and where it is. And being a private person, if I owned the land all around, I wouldn't want to sell it either. But being a local government and someone who, we talk about housing studies all the time and the need for housing. I'm curious as to why, what we're using that house for and, um, why it's not on the listing for sale list.
Um, currently, we are using it for stores for Parks and Recreation. Um, they use it with, um, the ag fair and all the land around it is used for, um, overflow parking for that, so.
Yeah, but that land's on a separate ticket. This ticket's only the house and the acre.
Correct. Um, we purchased that property after we had purchased all the land around it, because we had purchased all the land around it. Um, and we were using that for the fair.
Using the house for the fair?
Uh, well, the overflow parking all around it. So it's, uh, it, there needs to be substantial work done to the house. Um, there are some water issues, uh, but also just because we are using the surrounding property for the overflow parking, uh, the county chose to hold on to the house.
I, I think we should consider putting that on the other list, myself. I see where it gets used. I see the, uh, stuff for the Christmas wreaths and everything put up under the shelter and I understand that. But like, I've sat in here for a long time talking. And when, when we talk about disposition of property, my whole thought behind that is getting this stuff back on the tax roll for it to be taxable income for the county. And for us, what we hear about the housing shortage and then I just, I don't know that sitting on a house just for storage is a, I don't know if that's what we should be doing.
Mr. Mitchell, I remember this piece of property. We were leasing that house, had renters in there. The renters came to Mr. Leland Mitchell then. And the house was in dire needs of repair. Uh, it was, had something to do and we'd have to go back and do the manics. I wouldn't want to rely completely upon my memory, but I think it had something to do with, uh, the well and the septic. And it was, it was in bad shape. And at that time, there was a couple of us on the board that recommended just tear it down. You know, and put it in with the property, you know, because that's sitting right in the middle of what the county already owns. And that's a valuable, that little piece, and for that, uh, uh, acre, uh, how many? For that, like acre, two acres, whatever it was.
One point one, I think.
One point one acre. And, and that's what.
One point oh oh one, excuse me.
One acre. So, and it was right in the middle of that park. You know where it's at, it's right below your house. And it was right there on that piece of property. And it's so, you know, you, you go with the, the value and, and the. So at that time, at that time, the, the board did not want to invest the money into the repairs. And it just basically ended up turning the house into a storage facility. And that's why it's like it is.
And I, I understand, and, and my point being there's a difference in person owning property and saying, well, I don't want to lose this. And there's a, and a local government owning property and sitting on it. I, I see, I view it differently.
I understand what you're saying, but it was also discussed then, especially when they start having the fair. And then they start having the ball games because it's used for parking across the road. Then if somebody's got that one acre, then it's just gonna open up. Thanks for the sheriff's department had to come down there, cause the noise and somebody over here, kids and stuff. It was a lot discussed at that time. So I'm just trying to answer your question on what, you know, what do you want to sell that one piece or just, to me, tear the house down and put that one acre in with the other forty, forty-some acres?
I understand. I get, my, my point to it all is we spend a whole lot of time talking about housing.
Yeah.
And we're sitting on one. And I hear the flack about it from people that drive by and say, well, the county just sits on that house and don't do nothing with it. I hear it all the time.
But that's what it is. It's in.
But it is a nice looking brick home. It's not just some stick built.
I mean, I, I, I'm sure it can be repaired. Well, the septic, I'm sure. I don't know if him septic line's gonna run out on the county property or not. But anyway, somebody over here had some.
No, I was just gonna ask you, um, that's your district, so you know it well. Um, are the, the property that's around this, is it, is it contiguous to the property the house is on? That if we use it for the fair and for overflow parking, if we didn't hold on to the house, if we sold it, would that preclude the use of the other property around it for parking?
No, you don't enter in it. Nobody, none of the overflow parking is on that acre.
Okay.
It's on, but the county owns both sides. You got the cell tower here, but all the parking is over here in this field.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I mean, on the backside of that piece of property, when that, uh, strong wind come through and tore fallen trees. There's a huge pile of brush back there. I mean, a big pile of brush. On the backside of that property. But anyway. Ms. Ross, go ahead, please. Sorry.
Oh, no. Um, if I can look into the issues that would need to be repaired if we were to market that house and bring it back to you at a future work session if, um, if you would like.
I would like to see that.
Okay. That's all I had for the disposition.
I've, I've one more comment of, since it sounds like we'll be taking these back and doing some more research. One other research, I, not to task you with more work, but one other thing to think about. So if, um, these properties that have the park restriction on them, now they're priced at around, they're valued at around five thousand an acre, which just to me seems very high. My guess is that the bids would come in far lower than that. And so, um, my question is if this property that is worth, um, its value, it has an assessment value of fifty-five thousand. If somebody bought that for a thousand dollars, does that adjust the fair market value and thus the assessment down to a thousand dollars? Or will the assessed value still stay up at fifty-five thousand dollars? I, I think that would be an important, which one?
It'll stay up, I think.
But, but fair market value is determined by what people are willing to pay for a piece of property. So if it exchanges hands and, uh, there's a third-party transaction, you would think the assessed value would come down because that establishes the fair market value for that property.
Ms. Quinn, you got a comment?
Well, it'll stay up until the next reassessment unless the homeowner decides to challenge it.
That's why they do comps, you know. It's the best comp, yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, and now, I'm gonna hand it off to Steve. He has a presentation on disposition of county tower assets.
Yeah, and if you want, before we get into that, we can make sure we've wrapped up the, the first part of that. Cause I think the other part of that was helping us determine how you want to sell these properties. Cause there's multiple different ways. And I think we were looking for a little bit of direction as far as, you know, if, if we ultimately decide on which properties to sell, what's the process, uh, to do that? But we can certainly discuss that in work session as well. So I just wanted to make sure before I moved on to the next, to the next topic, that, that we didn't really get into that as far as the, the process for selling. I think, uh, Brandy had mentioned that in her, her presentation, so. Um, I don't know if there's any thoughts on that or any direction you guys have for the, for the staff on that.
I think it can's been kicked down the road a whole lot. Properties done been said, put up for sale, but the property that's been named today is probably the least desirable of what we got other than maybe that one piece, but even the one piece is landlocked, number ten. And, uh, I think our only saving grace is if there's some adjoining property owner that's willing to want that piece of property for hunting or something to that effect and willing to live within restrictions. It's, uh, I don't know, I, I mean, to answer your question, what do y'all want to do?
I'll offer a motion, Mr. Chairman, to move things along, sure. Um, I would make a motion to delay the action on this request until additional information can be provided. With the exception of proceeding with, uh, parcel number ten, uh, to be sold. Uh, the method of selling the property to be in consultation with county staff.
Go have a second. Might I do a roll call, please?
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Sandy?
All right. So, uh, moving on to some other, um, county-owned property or county-owned assets. Um, we've, uh, had, uh, over the years, we've, we've acquired kind of some tower assets through our broadband project, but also through our radio project. And so, um, we have, uh, identified about, uh, nine of those towers that, uh, are currently under our ownership. Uh, kind of similar to the, the Smith Farm discussion earlier, is we are not in the tower business. And so as county staff, um, you know, we, we really don't want to have to be responsible for these tower structures, uh, necessarily and have to maintain them, uh, and take care of them, hold the liability insurance. Of course, they're all insured and everything now, but, you know, what we would, uh, like to propose to the, to the board is that we put out an RFP process, uh, for, uh, someone to buy these towers, uh, buy these assets, uh, from the county. And then, uh, they would be responsible for the, the ongoing maintenance. And then, uh, they would be responsible for the, the ongoing maintenance and, and ongoing repairs and so forth to those structures. But also they would be, uh, responsible for any other improvements that they wanted to do to those. So adding any, uh, other broadband, adding, you know, cellular to them, that they would then have the ability to do that. And so, uh, what we're requesting here is an opportunity to put this out for proposals, uh, you know, somewhat similar to what I talked about earlier with the Smith Farm, but specifically for these, uh, tower facilities that we have. And as I've noted here in the third bullet, I think what we would look at is some, some key, uh, points that we would put in the proposal is that, um, certainly we would want to see a monetary offer for, for these assets. There is a, a monetary value to these assets. Um, and, and the associated lease space that's on those. We would also want to make sure that any of those existing ground leases, um, you know, so that, so the tower's just an asset that has a lease on the underlying ground property. We would want to make sure that those initial leases, uh, certainly were honored. I think legally they would have to, but we would certainly want to make sure that those terms are still honored. Uh, we would want to reserve our, uh, county public safety space that we have on any of these structures. And, uh, you know, hopefully honor that space at, at no charge as well. So that would be something I think we would want to negotiate or, or discuss about maintaining that space on, uh, the ones we're on and, and potentially any of the others if the need did arise in the future. Same with the fixed wireless. Uh, we have fixed wireless broadband on several of those. And so as that technology still exists and there's a need for that, um, and, and those providers want to be on there, that we would want to make sure that whoever purchases these towers would certainly honor those lease terms as well. Um, and then we would kind of want to know, I, I think we would want to know as part of a proposal is the plan to market those towers for additional cellular service or other, uh, amenities for those towers. And so that's just a few items I think that we would certainly want to see in any proposals that we received. And so, um, what we're asking for here is, uh, just the opportunity to, to put out the notice for proposals for this, uh, for acquiring these tower assets. And as I kind of mentioned before, as, after we got those in, we would have an opportunity to evaluate those, make our recommendation to, to the board, and certainly negotiate the terms of, of the, um, sale of those assets at that time. But what we're really looking for now is to be able to start that process, um, to put these out, to put a bid out and, and our request for proposals and start to receive bids. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have on.
Anybody got any questions to Steve?
Just quickly, Mr. Sandy, um, the, uh, under the conditions, the, uh, ground lease language and then county public safety space and service needs, which one of those would you qualify as the tower sitting on school property? Is that, is that under the county or is that leased space from schools?
Currently, it's leased space from the schools, uh, because they, they're kind of in charge of, of those properties. The way those ground leases are worked is that currently is that any revenue that's generated from those would be split fifty-fifty between the school system and the, the general county fund.
So that would need to be addressed during the sale of the school-owned leases? Well, the, the leases that the schools have on the towers.
Yeah, I think what, what we would propose at this point is that those existing lease terms would just remain in effect.
Okay.
And so, if someone buys that tower, let's just use Callaway as an example, if someone buys that tower that, and, uh, T-Mobile locates on that next week, that that revenue would then be split between the school system and the county in that particular case.
Thank you.
And we have a similar arrangement with a couple of the fire departments as well, where if, if there's additional providers that go on that, that that revenue is shared between, uh, the county and that nonprofit organization.
Thank you.
So Steve, as you know, one of the initiatives we've been working on with this Union Hall Village Working Group is to improve the cell coverage, not only of the designated growth area, but really that, that whole corridor all the way from the Pennsylvania County line, uh, on Route forty is, is the focus, from the Pennsylvania County line all the way to Rocky Mountain. And, and there are many areas along that corridor where the coverage is really weak. And it's a problem both for the citizens, but even for public safety, uh, response. And so, uh, one of these towers, of course, is right, is, is, it's a crown jewel on that path, right? The Glade Hill Elementary School. And so then it, it makes me wonder, how do you sell the tower and avoid them blocking your kick to put coverage up there where, say you sell the tower and now, well, T-Mobile or Verizon, pick any one of them. They want to put an antenna up there and, and you realize, wow, this isn't going to work because the new tower owner wants X and the, the, uh, cell carrier's only willing to pay Y and, and we can't do it. And so how do we avoid getting our kick blocked so that we make sure that we can put antennas up there, that the, that the price is reasonable? It's almost, it almost feels like a utility in a way where, you know, the, the water company, they're providing water to a lot of the homes and they can't just price the water at any price. It's a utility. It's controlled. And so how do you control the price to put antennas up on the tower so they don't block our kick to get? And, and I'm speaking about one that's in my area that I'm really interested on, but I'm, I'm interested in all these. It's a question for all of them, not just for Glade Hill.
Yeah, I think, you know, my answer to that would be, the anticipation would be that, uh, uh, a company that, that this is their business, that they would buy those towers and, and they want to generate that revenue. And so they're going to actively market those sites because that's how they're going to make a profit. And so our, our, my vision or expectation would be that these, anyone that's interested in these towers, that they're interested because they want to be able to get people on those towers as quick as possible to be able to generate that revenue. So, um, that, that would be my hope is, is that we, one of these tower companies would buy these and then they would be working out those arrangements with Verizon, T-Mobile, AT&T, whoever it is. Um, we don't control the price, but hopefully the free market, in that sense, the free market will work, uh, work the way it's supposed to work. And, and they'll come to an agreement on what the appropriate dollar amount is for, for locating on that structure. So that, that would be the hope. And, and we just kind of let the, the private sector kind of handle this would be why we would kind of be stepping out of it in a lot of ways, um, as the tower owner. And then as we still have that lease arrangement for the ground lease, that we would still be able to, um, you know, share in any of those revenues that are generated as well.
I know. So then you raise a really interesting thought in my mind where the focus could simply be on how much a company will give me for this tower, right? And you're trying to maximize the revenue that you get for the tower. But maybe there's somebody that wouldn't give you as much money for the tower. However, they'll make it a little less expensive for the cell companies to put their antennas up there. And so in a way, we're, we're selling it for a lower price, but we're subsidizing, um, this effort so the antennas get up there more quickly instead of selling it for top dollar. And now you're, you're positioning the new owner to try to get enough money to, to recoup what they paid us. You know, it just makes me, it's a, it would be good to look at the, kind of the whole picture of the bids coming in and be willing potentially to take less money in return for, um, getting better, um, cell coverage more quickly, more antennas up there.
I mean, it's a good point. There's, there's probably a way we could incentivize it, um, you know, uh, uh, just off the top of my head. If, if you get a co-locator on it within one year, then, you know, there's either a discount or there's some sort of payback at that point.
Yeah.
You know, there, there could be arrangements like that. I think that could be, you know, discussed and part of the process. Assuming, assuming that's all legal, but, uh, you know, you know, I think there could be ways you could negotiate that sort of thing to kind of get to your point is, hey, we really want you to get someone on the tower as quickly as possible. And so we're willing to incentivize that in some way. Um, I think those are things we could entertain through the, the interview process and the discussion with folks that may submit a proposal for this.
That'd be awesome because, and, and again, it's a comment for all of these, like Snow Creek is one of them. And I, I've heard how poor the coverage is down there. And so that same incentive program to help somebody get up on the tower earlier would be, would be incredible for the area, I think.
Anybody? Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for me personally, I would sort of like to see a financial analysis, what the county could possibly receive from the sale of these towers versus if we can estimate long-term expense and maintenance and, and, and down the road, what it's going to cost the county. And also, I think at some point in time, these cell towers are going to be useless anyway because they're going to continue with this, uh, satellite systems and Starlink. And eventually they're going to be obsolete because all that's going to be satellite beam. So if we're going to get out of it, we, we definitely need to get out of it before that takes effect because then they're going to be useless. That's just my comment.
Mr. Mitch, oh, Mr. Jameson? All right. Uh, all right. What's the pleasure of the board with the, uh, tower disposition? Uh, I've heard several different comments there. Are we ready to do the RFP? Are we ready for staff to come back in June, uh, with the answer to these questions? And then the proposal be made at that time? Or are we delaying? What do you want to do?
I'm for moving forward with the RFP and then we can decide at that time.
We can decide then. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we move forward with the RFP.
Need a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman can offer a friendly amendment, Mr. Carter?
Sure, absolutely.
Um, that the, uh, the authorization would include, uh, for the structure of the RFP, the noted conditions that are in the presentation.
That's fine.
Madam Court, will you read it? Uh, motion back, please.
We'll make a motion, um, to authorize staff, um, to develop, um, the necessary request for proposals, with an amendment, um, for authorization to include structure of the RFP noted condition, including the structure of the RFP noted conditions in the presentation.
We have a second? We have a second. Madam Court, we do a roll call on that, please.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, I think with lack of time, we're probably going to end up going in our closed session after our meeting today. Uh, if you need to take a break, go ahead and take one. But, uh, I'm going to ask, uh, uh, staff if they'll move forward with Snow Creek Volunteer Rescue Squad capital allocation discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, following, uh, the April board meeting, uh, the board, of course, made a, uh, motion and approved a one, approximately one hundred thousand dollar, uh, allocation to the Snow Creek Volunteer Rescue Squad. Um, and so as follow-up, there's been some discussion, um, uh, some, uh, from board members and staff and so forth. Before, uh, that, of course, allocation is processed, um, similar to the Farm Bureau memorandum of understanding. There is a memorandum of understanding that the Farm Bureau, if you are recall, the board allocated seventy-five thousand dollars. And part of that, uh, we entered into a memorandum of understanding for the actual expenses that would be utilized for the poultry study. And so in, in the same vein, given these are county tax, uh, dollars and so forth, to memorialize, I guess, the intent uh, of the one hundred thousand dollars, uh, in terms of some security, uh, for those funds. Um, some discussions been made and, and certainly maybe board members have some questions as to, uh, how we can go about. And I've had discussions with the county attorney, maybe memorializing, uh, this in a memorandum. But it's understood that, you know, given the hundred thousand dollars that it would be used specifically for not only existing EMS purposes, but future EMS purposes in the event, uh, that, say, that rescue squad organization no longer exists because that happens on occasion, uh, with other localities. And so just some for protectionary measures. And so, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would, um, start there. I know, um, uh, some members of the board, um, had expressed, uh, some questions regarding that. And I just wanted to maybe give that introduction for the board, uh, for, for this afternoon, for the board's pleasure.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Mitchell for your steadfast advocacy for Snow Creek. You're doing an outstanding job and I, I commend you for that. Um, after we placed that vote, I got home and I started thinking, boy, I let myself down because what we didn't do is that we did not talk about due diligence. We did not talk about some of our best practices that we as a board usually try to employ when we're allocating funds. And what I would, um, I've got copies of this for the board to look at as we discuss this. Um, uh, the ultimate goal is to consider a motion to amend the motion on, from April sixteenth. And I have, I'm suggesting some conditions that would bring in that due diligence so that we can make sure that we are being accountable for taxpayer money and that we're being very transparent. So quickly, uh, the conditions, one is to develop a project scope that's consistent with sleeping quarters, um, not to exceed a two-bedroom plan, and that's my understanding, that we would direct the donors of the eighty thousand dollars that they've raised, um, to seek bids acting in their own capacity on an agreed-upon scope for two bedrooms with public safety. And if those bids come in over eighty thousand dollars, that we would, uh, request review, uh, by Public Safety Administration with subsequent recommendation to ensure that the request is in alignment with capital and operational priorities of public safety. And if there is an affirmative recommendation from Public Safety, that the county, we will then issue an RFP with that agreed-upon scope. Uh, and if we're moving forward, the eighty thousand dollars raised would be the first money utilized. If the project comes in at eighty thousand dollars or less, no county funds will be utilized. And that an MOU would be developed to articulate the details. Um, and that public safety moving forward, um, if this proceeds to put sleeping quarters in, um, any subsequent discussions, um, about staffing for twenty-four seven, that that be bounced back to public safety. And I think for me, the, the real emphasis here is, I kind of, I mean, for me, I let myself down because I think these things ought to go back to staff. I, I think this should have gone back to public safety for evaluation. And this is just another example of things that come up to us late in the evening and, um, we're tired. Yeah, I know I was tired. Um, and I missed, I missed, I let myself down on this. So, um, I wanted the board to consider, um, some or all of these conditions, and I'll pass this out for your consideration. Um, but I do think that we must apply some accountability for the taxpayer money. Um, because even things like, you know, I'm understanding that some of our other stations are now, you know, coming forward, wanting some things done to their building. It's opening a can of worms. So the way you put a, a, a top on that can of worms is we ensure that we're being equitable. And we ensure that we are looking at, as an example, when Public Safety gets requests, that they're looking at their capital priorities, that they're looking at things like response times. And if they had a hundred thousand dollars, what would they do with it? What would be their priority? And we as a board don't have that expertise, uh, quite simply. And so we just, in my opinion, we missed a, a major step here, putting into place some due process, um, on this money. And these are the conditions, Mr. Chairman, that I am suggesting to the board. Um, with, with the end result, um, being wherever the board heads with this, um, my overall goal is to try to amend the previous motion for due diligence purposes. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
I'm not going to go back and try to amend anything. Um, we already gave it to them. They said they had a hundred and eighty thousand dollar estimate. They raised eighty and came in at a hundred. Uh, I spoke with Brian Carter about how that, that'll work. They'll submit, um, invoices to him directly. He'll send the money in those amounts, not monthly or however he, however Brian and them want to handle it. Um, but no, I, I don't, it was, I guess, the way I look at it was done on a handshake agreement. And as far as, um, Public Safety Administration coming back with it and that stuff, I, I'm, I'm good for accountability and I want, I'm all for looking after how taxpayer dollars are spent. But I don't have a, I don't have an issue with how tax dol- taxpayer dollars were spent on this instance.
Madam Court, do you have that motion? Uh, are you accessible to that motion that was made on that, uh? Okay, uh.
And as far as directing the donors of the eighty thousand to seek bids, the, the donors have already made, gave the money to the rescue squad. They have that sitting in their own account. So I don't guess the donors would be the ones to seek the bids.
I guess my point, um, Mr. Mitchell, was that I don't know, I mean, I would think that for eighty thousand dollars, you could, you could do two, two rooms and sleeping quarters. And my point is, is I would, as fiduciary of that hundred thousand dollars, want to know that they've gotten several estimates, bids, whatever you want to call them. Um, and that, that money that, that, that's been raised and, and bless them for doing that. Uh, but before we would award a hundred thousand more dollars, that we understand if, if the scope is two bedrooms, um, and if it, if we can do it for the eighty thousand dollars. and if it, if we can do it for the $80,000. That's my concern. And, and, and the other part of this whole conversation gets into, and it moves quickly into, you're doing sleeping quarters. So that infers 24/7 response, you know, and staff down there. And the data doesn't bear it out. So that's why I wanted it to go back to Public Safety, so that they can look at all of that, so that we're, we can make a decision that we can defend, we can articulate it, you know, clearly, rather than being challenged with it in an arbitrary way.
Well, I'm putting an addition on my house now for one bedroom and it's $80,000. So I don't have a problem with it the way it was.
Okay.
And I know they have a local builder there in Snow Creek that I'm pretty sure did the drones and stuff for them for free. And I've known him my whole life. I feel like it's perfectly fair.
All right, Liz, so, did you find it?
That's right.
Yes, ma'am. I think what we need to do is, we'll table this for just a few minutes until she can get that motion. And then I've got a question, a legal question to ask Mr. Quinn when we go into close in regards to the motion on that. So let's, we'll table that for the time being. You have it now?
Yes, I have it.
Will you please read that?
Be it therefore resolved by the Board of Supervisors to approve county staff to work with Snow Creek and appropriate the requested money of $100,000.
That was basically it?
That's it.
Did we not have some discussion at the end of it? That if the county puts money in there, apparently we didn't. If you don't have that, I know we had the discussion.
It wasn't in the motion. It wasn't in the motion, but yeah, I can look back at the video.
But we didn't have that in, we didn't have that in the motion.
Right. Correct.
Okay, so, all right, this, this what we'll do. This what we'll do. If you'll get that discussion, pull it up, find it. And then we'll bring this back up in just a few minutes, probably it, before we go into that. All right, this, when she, while she's finding that. County Attorney Report, I know you're not going to be here Thursday. So do you have anything or, because the board report and Mr. Whitlow report will be done on Thursday. Okay. With that being said, Mr. Tatum, will you do the entertainment and we'll go into B-75? And I think supper's ready. We'll just have to go into closed session and eat our supper and be back out here at 6:00.
All right, Mr. Chairman. The Franklin County Board of Supervisors will motion to enter into a closed meeting in accordance with 2.2 to Act 3711. A1, personnel discussion of appointments to county boards, commissions, and et cetera. A3, discussion of the acquisition of real property or the disposition of real property. A5, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry. And A29, discussion, discussion of the terms of a public contract of the Code of Virginia as amended.
Quinn? Yeah, I have a legal question in regards to a motion.
And A7, consultation with attorney.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Court, we do a roll call on that, please.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Your supper's ready there, B-75. Our meeting to order. Mr. Tatum?
Okay, Mr. Chairman. I certify that only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which this certification applies. And only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies.
I need a second?
Second.
Madam Court, we do a roll call on this, please.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Okay, let's go for it with our appointments. Anybody want to go for it with theirs? Or did anybody have any wanting to wait until the June?
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to start the.
Go ahead, Madam Court.
cycle off. I have several, Mr. Chairman, that I'll run through pretty quickly if the boards in concurrence.
Okay.
The first one is reappointing Cheryl Eggy to the Planning Commission for Gills Creek. Her term expires at the end of June. It's a four-year term and she's agreed to be reappointed.
All right, that's not a motion?
That's a motion, sir.
We need a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign? All right, next?
The next one, Mr. Chairman, is the vacancy that the Gills Creek District has on the Social Services Board. I presented resumes and so forth last month, and I bring Dave Metzger forward for appointment to the DSS Board for the Gills Creek District effective beginning July 1st. And that's in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
And my last, Mr. Chairman, Maggie Gray has agreed to be, to renew her term on the Aging Services Board for Gills Creek. And the appointment would begin July 1st as well, and I move to appoint her.
Second.
All right, have a first and have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No? That carried.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman. I have a planning on the Planning Commission, like what of David Pelton. His term runs out in June this year. He's, I'd like to stay on. I'd like to see him reappointed to it, please. And that would be a motion.
That's your motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everybody in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Matter carried.
Mr. Chairman, another one on the Aging Services, Lee Prom. Her term runs out June 30th of this year. She has indicated she'd like to stay on and continue serving another term. And I would like to make that as a motion also.
Need a second? A second? Everybody in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Anybody else? All right, I've got two. Mine's on the Library Board, Susan Banks. There's what comes up. Talk to them on the Library Board. I'll make that a motion, Susan Banks, for the Library Board.
Second.
Need a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, then on the Recreation Board, Michael Banks, this is her husband. He's from the Boone District as well. I'll make a motion that he go back on.
Second.
Got a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
That's mine, too. Anyone else got any? All right, seeing none, we'll go back.
Mr. Chairman. I'm down here. Before we move on, there are three appointments to CPMT. If we could consider those, there's an executive summary in your, in your folder.
Is that going to be?
I missed that, Brian.
I'm sorry, Ms. Smith.
No.
It's reallocating.
Thanks for saying that.
I should be leading that charge.
It's reallocating the staff appointments, Mr. Chairman.
Of the staff appointments?
Yes, ma'am.
Gotcha.
Attachment 17.
Okay, it's in an executive summary?
It is an executive summary.
Mr. Chair?
Essentially, the request is, if you're looking, it was in the, it's in the closed session folder.
Mr. Chairman, when you're ready, I'm happy to take the lead on this as your CPMT rep.
Oh, that's an emotion for approval, micro motion approval. Somebody want to read that, Ms. Smith?
Yes, sir, I certainly will. I would move to appoint Brian Carter into the County Administration position, replacing Chris Whitlow. Appoint Cory White, Assistant Finance Director, as the Fiscal Agent. And appoint Angela Phillips, Director of the Franklin County Family Resource Center, as the County Employee, all serving on the CPMT Board.
Need a second?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, that took care of that one. Just for the public's information, I know you think we probably moved through that pretty fast. But all these folks have been vetted prior to coming here. So we know, we know that they have been checked and vetted and also have had criminal history checks and everything's done. And so that's, we didn't move through it as fast as you thought we did. It took a lot of behind-the-scenes doing to get to this point. And so that right there is just to get by. All right, that being said, now that's, that's everything on those appointments. All right, we're going to have a public hearing now on VDOT's secondary six-year plan. A public hearing. And with that being said, Lisa and you, Ms. Cooper, and.
Todd, so basically, my role here tonight is, obviously, we're having a public hearing on our secondary six-year plan that's going to run through fiscal year 2025 to 2030. And all of you know, Mr. Todd Daniel, he's our resident, residency administrator for both Bedford and Franklin Counties. And he's going to do the presentation tonight. I'm just here for moral support or if he needs any questions, but I'm sure he can answer them all. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll give it a shot, I don't know.
All right, taking my coat off.
Mr. Chairman and the board, good to be with you again this evening. As Ms. Cooper said, we're going to talk about the secondary six-year plan. So I've got a, I've got a PowerPoint here. I'll move through pretty quick because you've seen some of this already when we had our work session. And then we'll get to where we added, which is good news, we don't get to do this a whole lot. We added four roads to the secondary six-year plan and fully funded those roads. So a little bit of an odd night for Franklin County, Ms. Smith.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
You're getting on my good side.
So as, as you know, as we talked about before at the work session and before that, secondary six-year plan, it's updated annually. Every year we do it in the spring. And the funds are allocated by our CTP, our Commonwealth Transportation Board for performing construction activities on a secondary system. Now, that could be any secondary roadway or a connector or what have you. One thing that's not in this particular bullet is the majority of that money is unpaid road funds. And those unpaid road funds can only be used on unpaid roads. So it's for the secondary system, but the way the funds are allocated or the fund type, it does limit us to a point. We've got some telefee funds and I'm going to hit on that in just a minute. The draft plan for this year, for this cycle is 2.1 million, a little over 2.1 million. It includes, like I said, eight rural rustics. So we had four. We were able to add eight to the plan. And I'll also talk about some, one project that we finished that's one of those four. And then three county-wide call centers, traffic services, county-wide engineering, and right-of-way survey that we, that we fund annually. And I make a point about that because I'm going to talk about that as well. So a few things I'm going to point out as we go along. So, construction priority number one in the draft plan is Bar Ridge Road, and we completed that. It's still in the plan because we have to go through financial closeout. The good thing that happened, we were able to reduce the estimate to the actual cost because we are complete. By doing that, and we had some savings, we took Bar Ridge from an original cost estimate north of a million. We got it down to less than $700,000, which is what we're authorized to do with state forces. We were able to save some money on top of that. Well, all that savings rolls back into the six-year plan, which is one of the primary reasons I'm able to stand here and say we funded all the eight projects in the draft plan. So Bar Ridge is complete. It'll fall off the plan next year. We're under the, we're in the preliminary engineering process for Red Valley Road, and we plan to complete that next year. And then we'll move forward with Novella Road and Webster Corner. And you see here that through Novella Road, all of those projects are fully funded. They need no more funds based on their current estimate to go to develop, plan development and construction. Webster Corner Road actually got accelerated from the plan last year because of those, those savings that we're able to re-purpose in the plan. It just speeds up everything else. So Webster Corner moved up to being fully funded in 2026. That is July of 2025 is the date. So that's a, that's a, that's a good thing. Four new projects, we talked about these at the work session. 865 Timberline Road up near the Ingramville end, Route 795 Stave Mill between Six Mile Post and Route 40. Narrows Road up in the Boone's Mill Road area off of Route 692, and then Clark Road between Pleasant Hill and Route 220. So all of those receive funding throughout the fiscal years 2026 through 2030, and they're 100% funded based on this. So here is the, the distribution, if you will. You see the telefee and you see the district grant unpaid. That's the only two funds we get. You see the 2.17 million that I talked about. And I say majority, 800,000 in telefee, 1.3. So it is the majority, but it's not the vast majority. Unpaid road funds can only go to unpaid roads. Telefee can go to any project. We typically put them towards the unpaid roads because we have very limited funds as it is in the county. So to try to accomplish something, we're utilizing all the funds for unpaid roads, historically. Real quick refresher, unpaid secondary road funds that I talked about. This is a code section that basically backs that up and tells us how we can use it and where we can put it. That distribution comes from a $25 million set-aside annually that's then distributed through all the counties based on the unpaid roads that carry more than 50 vehicles a day. So it's a prorated distribution, if you will. Ms. Smith has asked about those distributions and the telefees, which is the paragraph below that. And I've actually got a slide that I'm going to try to explain on that. Telefees, if you remember, I explained what it was, but I made the comment that I'm not really sure why it goes down, which it does go down. We'll see that it doesn't go every year, but it does typically go down. That's, that's, that's what we feel, what we see. So I took the time to look at my cell phone bill, my personal cell phone bill. And all of us, I think, pay what's called a right-of-way use fee. And I was curious about my cell phone bills particularly because the copper's not in the ground for all cell phones like it was when we all had landlines, right? And, and I won't go as far as to say that all the fiber that's going in for communication will benefit us. I don't know that yet. But indeed, our cell phone bills do carry a right-of-way use fee, which according to this, goes back into the county in which it's collected. So the folks that live in Franklin County that are paying a right-of-way use fee, if I understand it properly, that's where our telefees come from for each county. So hopefully, that's a little clarification.
Thank you, Todd.
So the next two tables may, you may think they contradict each other, but, but they don't. It's not exactly apples and apples. So this table I showed you before is simply comparing the five common years in the plan. So year FY '25 is upcoming. That was, that is the only year that that money is, yes, guaranteed it's going to be that money. That's the allocation. '26 through '30 are projections, and they do fluctuate occasionally. So what we see here is, from last year when we talked to this year, our telefee's reduced by $1,238 per year for the five common years, because '24 is gone, for a total of $6,190. Not, it's a decrease, but it's not the worst we've ever seen. So that was manageable. This table is what Ms. Smith had asked about. So what did it really look like over a given period of time? So these numbers are actuals. We took the actual allocation for the current year in the secondary six-year plan. And we've got telefee in the first set of columns because that was, that was the biggest part of the conversation. That was, generated the question. You see these different district grant unpaid, CT Bill formula unpaid, secondary unpaid roads. Think about those as all the same. There were different code sections behind them, but they're the same thing. It's unpaid road money. So don't, don't let the title or the column header confuse you. It's unpaid road money. So we really got telefee unpaid road. So you see here that, let's go in telefee and get back to 2012. So the first, the first year in those 2012, 2017, that was year 2012. 186 and change. Then it dropped 21,000, dropped again in 2014, 14 more thousands. Now we're, we've dropped almost 36,000. Then it crept up a little bit, which was nice to see. And then you see the red again, so it's, it's been dropping again since 2019. It's been going down. I don't have an answer for why, but that's the data. I don't have an answer for why, but that's the data. So we, we see that it predominantly decreases, but 2018, we got a 15, almost a $16,000 bump. So I don't, I don't know exactly what happened, but it's not all bad news, I guess is the best takeaway here. Any questions about that before I move on?
Todd, I'd like to thank you for this.
Yes, ma'am. All right. So this is nothing more than the map I showed you at the work session with the four, four projects that we talked about that's in the draft plan in front of you all tonight. Number one is Bar Ridge, number two is Red Valley, three is Novella, and four is Webster Corner. They're already in the plan that, that was voted on prior to tonight. Five is Timberline, six Stave Mill, seven Narrows Road, and eight is Clark Road. I did this for a couple of reasons. I, I want to make sure you all could see the roads, but also to see the distribution across the county. Because that, that matters to folks, I think. We, what, how do we, how do we cover in our whole county? Always keep in mind, where are your unpaid roads when you see these type of maps? So Ms. Smith, you don't see a lot in Gills Creek.
Right.
You also don't have as many unpaid roads.
Correct.
So that, that, you know, kind of is logical. As we get into the northern and northwestern part of the county, we've got unpaid road, we've got, we've got them in a lot of places, but you see a little concentration in Boone. This for good reason. Population, traffic volume, sorts of things, all that goes into our decision-making and our recommendations to you all. So this is just a, a graphic of the distribution, if you will. So real quickly, I'll run through them just, just for awareness. So this is Bar Ridge. Once again, it's complete off a novelty. And remember, we didn't build it all. If you follow Bar Ridge to the south, it makes a, makes a left turn. We stopped down there before that curve. That's where that hard surface has stopped. So this is Red Valley and we're going to complete Red Valley between Bon Brook Mill and Boons Mill Road when this project gets constructed. Novella is a, is a dead end, interstate maintenance will, that'll be completely hard-surfaced when, when we finish that project. And then Webster Corner is a continuation of a project we did several years ago. We did about seven tenths of a mile. We're going to do another section. It does not get it all the way to Wade's Gap, but it does get it to cover most of the homes, basically all but one. It'll, it'll cover that. So Timberline, like I said, up here towards the north and where it intersects with Ingramville, we've, we've got our highest volume section at Timberline that will get that hard-surfaced and, and honestly reduce probably our highest complaint, unpaid road. And, and the complaints are valid, it's just, it's, it's busy, so. Stave Mill connects from Six Mile Post, like I said, to Franklin. We've talked about that a few years. I'm, I'm glad we, we got it in the draft plan. We always like, and it's a grade crossing, but we've got a grade crossing at Six Mile Post. You just never know what's going to happen and we need a relief valve. And we don't have a good one, so this, I think this is a, a good candidate. We'll, we'll make it safe when we need it. Narrows Road, based on volumes and what have you, this is up in the Boons Mill area. You see Boons Mill Road at the, at the bottom of the map there to the south. That's a dead end. We'll complete that to the end of state maintenance. And then Clark, we talked about Clark a little bit. This actually came from our superintendent that has worked some truck wrecks and different things and invariably, traffic goes across Clark. And whether we like it or not, we've got heavy volume on 220. I would like to eliminate every crash, but I don't think that's completely possible. So in a sense, another relief valve. We need safe detour routes around 220 and this is, this is a step in that direction. That's the end of my presentation. You've got the plan in front of you for adoption tonight. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
We had questions with Mr. Daniels before, but has this led to any new questions to him?
Mr. Chairman.
Any new questions?
Yes. Um, Mr. Daniels, again, thank you. Can you make sure that if you're willing to provide us copies or electronic file of the chart that you did, that you presented?
The, the, the comparison of each year?
Yes, sir.
Distributed?
Yes, sir.
Well, we'll get it to Mr. Sandy, I think. Did you get it? We'll get it, we'll get it to Mr. Sandy. Is that, is that what you're asking?
Oh, yeah. I just want to make sure that we get a copy of it.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. And I appreciate the work that, that VDOT does, Todd, and, and your office and, you know, having the conference call we had this week is very helpful. I, I think suffice it to say, the rural counties and the Commonwealth are not getting treated fairly, not on your watch.
I'm sure.
Too many monies are going to Northern Virginia that are getting removed from the rural counties in Virginia. And we're, you know, I'm working on that with, with a lot of different counties. So we need to shift the narrative for rural counties in, in the Commonwealth because the $235,000 a year allocation doesn't even get us a mile of paved road.
It doesn't.
Huh?
It doesn't.
It, it is. And so, you know, and I don't even know how counties that are even less fortunate than Franklin County, you know, sometimes they don't even qualify to even participate in smart scale. So the state's got to at some point acknowledge the fact that rural Southwest Virginia exists and we've got to take care of our roads and they've got a responsibility to fund it appropriately. And as example with the statute that you put up, the cap of $25 million. An example for my board colleagues is to advocate for that cap to be raised to, for example, to $250 million. So by requesting a cap increase therein would provide some, freeing up some money that I would ask to be directed back to rural localities as an example. But it's my intention that we bring these 11 counties that are on board together to start leveraging a meaningful package that would, we would approach the next biennial budget within about a year and a half. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Todd.
Yes, ma'am.
I know a couple of years ago, and I, I'm going to urge the board members, when you go to the VACO sessions, to go to the VDOT sessions and express your concerns because it's very important, as Ms. Smith just said. I went to one a couple of years ago and they were up there talking and they were talking about replacing guardrails because they were rusty, trying to get another lane, you know, a four-lane highway or the interstate. And they just went on and on wanting to, new traffic lights because they had started fading and was rusty. And I mean, it just went on and on. And then when it was my turn, I just raised my hand and I said, "Sir, I just want to know how to get a few loads of gravel on some gravel roads in Southwest Virginia." And I got a standing ovation from all the rest of the people from Southwest Virginia because this problem is just not to Franklin County, it's to everywhere out here. We are ignored. And so I encourage you guys, when you go to these VDOT sessions, to go, I mean, when you go to the VACO sessions, to go to VDOT and express your opinion because that's the only way we're going to get. And I mean, you, you know what we're talking about.
I understand. Yes, sir.
Because you're, you deal with it every day, trying to get your little share of the money for Franklin County and Bedford County. And that's going on. Any questions for Mr. Daniels? Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, buddy. Thank you for your time and your staff.
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm going to open the public hearing now about the six-year plan. Anybody wants to come and speak to the six-year plan on what Mr. Daniels just talked about? Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up?
Bonnie Law.
I'll state your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Bonnie Law. Mail and address, Boons Mill, Virginia. Mr. Daniel may leap out of his chair and sing hallelujah after I make my comments, but, or he may grab his chest and fall out of his chair. I'm not going to make it for him tonight. So anyway, he, he may want to kill me after these comments. But anyway, the first comment that I would like to make, you know, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. In my VDOT world, in a perfect plan, a girl can dream, I would love to see a brand-new road built between Route 220, somewhere in the Summit View area, that would go directly to the Westlake area on 122, straight shot. No curving up and down through Boons Mill Road, no curving on Windy Gap Road, no curving through Wertz Road, whatever. You know, we need a good road that gets from point A to point B for economic development and housing development through that stretch of the county. So that would be one thing that I'd like to comment on. And if I recall directly from Mr. Daniel, I think he's made a comment to me before in years past. Now, Mr. Daniel, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, about 4,500 cars, traffic count per day on Wertz Road. Wertz Road is not designed to handle that level of traffic under any stretch of the imagination. It, it's just outdated. It's just not going to hold up much, much longer. This traffic also includes through tractor-trailers and large commercial trucks. These types of vehicles should be routed off of Wertz Road onto Bon Brook Mill Road that are coming from Route 122 to get to 220. If these tractor-trailers and large commercial trucks were routed off of Wertz Road, they could also avoid the treacherous, little precarious Wertz Railroad underpass that always floods also during heavy rains and causes numerous accidents there probably through the years. So if somebody's trying to come off of 220, then Bon Brook Mill Road would need a turning lane through there. So that's something maybe the VDOT plan could consider. And I don't know if any of you all are familiar with Rock Lily Road, but if you're coming off of Rock Lily Road from the back way from Boons Mill and you're attempting to enter Wertz Road, you're sitting there like a sitting duck, waiting for a tractor-trailer or a large commercial truck like, you know, the Kundus tractor-trailer is up on top of the hill to come barreling through at you when you're getting ready just to enter that highway to go on Wertz Road. The line of sight there is absolutely horrid. You cannot see through the underpass, above the underpass, around the underpass. You are a sitting duck right there. And if you meet a large commercial truck coming the other way from 220, I mean, you're just, you just pray for your life if you meet them there at the underpass, particularly if it's on a rainy day. Then you're really saying another prayer. So I just wish that some of these concerns could be addressed. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sorry, that's all I have.
Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak to the VDOT six-year plan? Anyone here at all? Seeing none, we go back into closed session. All right, I'll entertain a motion now on whether we want to adopt this six-year plan as proposed.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes?
I would like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution for the secondary six-year plan as presented for 2025 through 2030.
I need a second?
Second.
Got a second? Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote on that, please.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right. That takes care of our public hearings. Now we go into our public comment. We've reached the time set aside in our meeting for public comment. Public comment gives citizens an opportunity to address the board in person or in writing on matters appropriate to the responsibilities of the board. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes for their comments. Speakers must direct all comments to the board as a whole and not to individual board members or employees of the board or county. Personal attacks and insulting, profane, or vulgar language will not be tolerated. Likewise, commentary on issues that are not within the purview of the board and a function of the local government and over which we have no control are not acceptable. Public comment is not a question-and-answer session and board members will not answer questions during public comment. If a speaker violates these rules, the chair may rule the speaker out of order and upon second violation, have the speaker removed from the podium. Madam Clerk, do we have folks signed up for public comment?
Reba Dillon.
Come forward, please. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Reba Dillon and I want to speak to you all at the Smith Farm. The Smith Farm was left to the people. When Mr. Smith died, I'm sure he intended for children and people to enjoy what he had left. And as you all know, the house was the estate. There were slave houses built behind it and it's a very historical place. But I was very sad when I first came up here today and started listening because I felt like the only thing you all were saying was, "Let's just sell it out. Let's just make every dollar we can off of it. Let's just forget about what Mr. Smith wanted to leave." But then I talked to Mr. Sandy and the attorney and they were like, "No, Reba, we want to have your development. We want you to put a park there. We want to work with you." So that made me feel really, really good because the things that I built for you all is to give it to the people and that they can enjoy it. And the trail has been awesome. So many people are using it. I go into restaurants or stores and people thank me all the time for that trail. And I say, "I didn't do it. The people did it." And so if you all want to sell the credits, I think that would be fine, but let's put some of the money back into the Smith Farm. You know, not put it somewhere else, but put it back in there so that Mr. Smith didn't die for nothing. He didn't leave that land for nothing. And Nick, I agree with you. Any old house can be restored. I bought an old house for $51,000 and they condemned it, said it needed to be tore down. I had a vision and I restored it. I put $50,000 into it and restored it. Two weeks later, I sold it for $264,000. I sold it for $164,000 or more, even they said it was condemned. So you're right, any old house can be restored and we can restore the old house at the Smith Farm. We can do it and we can make it something that this county will be proud of, something that we can show off. And that's what I'm always here for. And I, I really want you all to think about the people that's wanting to build up at the farm. They are putting such an effort into it. And I would like for you all just to consider, they can do the same thing that I have done. They can make you all proud if you all will support them. And I think each and every one of you all, each and every day, that you are the best
Kathy Champney.
Hi, I'm Kathy Champney at 4561 Booker T. Washington Highway. I'm a vendor at the Faram Farmers Market and I'm the Secretary of the Board of Directors for Friends of Faram Park. And I'm here tonight to say, "We're back." The Friends of Faram Park and community members from Faram and other areas in Franklin County are back. We are back because we're passionate about the Faram Project. We are back because we're excited to become good stewards of these parcels and create a space for everyone in Franklin County to enjoy. Excuse me. We're back because we believe our Board of Supervisors is not afraid to enter into a groundbreaking agreement to do what the citizens of Faram and Franklin County overall have repeatedly stated they want. An agreement that might be new and different, kind of scary, but that Southwestern Virginia is ready for. You were talking about the roads situation in Southwest Virginia. Southwest Virginia is ready for this. You have the opportunity to set a new precedent of community-centered and funded growth. Think about that a second. We are back because we've been working hard for over a year to make this vision a reality. We are back because we want to show you, our Board of Supervisors, that Friends of Faram Park is serious and ready to go. We're back because we believe in our mission and we are asking you to believe in us too. Thank you.
Rebecca Saunders, 245 Nature Zone Road, Faram. I have come up here many times and spoken at length about all the things I love about my community. I do that because I want you all to see the value in investing in communities like ours. I want you to see all the beautiful things that grow when you nourish and care for them. That's exactly the work our nonprofit group has been doing. Our nonprofit members have spent countless hours researching, writing, connecting, building, creating, and caring for our community in any way we can. From the community events we've held to the Faram Farm and Craft Market that all of us have spent countless hours volunteering our time to make happen. We don't do it for money or self-benefit. We do it because we are creating. We do it because we are creating the world and the community we want to live in and because the folks who live and work in Faram have deeply, deeply appreciated what we're doing. Our entire goal is to embrace, uplift, and promote all of the things that have always made Faram great. All the businesses, all the institutions, all the organizations. Our goal is to give them back the unwavering support that they have given us. Specifically, let me call out the Lions Club. They've been absolutely amazing. They come and they support us because to them, this is their project, too. The Lions Club is invested in making sure that Faram is its best self, and I cannot tell you what it means that they have given us their support. I feel like you all should find that highly respectable and such an honor because we do. Every time we have an event, every time we advertise something interesting that we're doing, every time someone comes to the Farm and Craft Market, that tells people that Franklin County is thriving. Faram is thriving. This is my community, my county, and I'm so deeply proud to be a part of it. I want to thank you all for voting to negotiate with us for the sale of the Faram parcels. Nonprofits like ours have the unique opportunity to apply and receive grants that municipalities like Franklin County cannot. We have the ability to bring in over a million dollars in grants just from our time, our effort, and our energy. Unfortunately, those grants are usually tied to specific products, projects, I'm sorry, and do not cover the purchase of real estate. We need and ask you all to take that into account as you consider our offer. We are ready, willing, and able and committed to doing this work. We simply ask that you see the same value in the work we are doing for our community as you have given large corporations. There's just as much value, if not more, in the work we are doing. Each of you has the opportunity to create a space that allows Faram and ultimately Franklin County to continue to grow and thrive. Please work with us to make it happen. Thank you.
Ed Saunders?
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate you having us. First off, I would like to ask each one of you, which is entirely rhetorical...
Please state your name and address for the record.
Yep. Ed Saunders, 245 Nature Zone Road, Faram, Virginia. I'd like to ask a rhetorical question. Why did each one of you become a Board of Supervisors? I imagine most of you want to make a difference in your community. You want to make the county better, and that is what we are trying to do, and so I'm hoping that you guys will join us in this mission. We essentially want this property to benefit not just a couple people, not just, you know, a handful of folks that live local. We want this to add to the value of Franklin County. We want it to add to tourism. We want it to bring in more people into our small businesses. We want to show off what Franklin County is about. We keep being asked in this whole thing, why, why the folks from Faram are going to have to pay for this again? Didn't we already pay for it through our taxes? Wouldn't this be a good use of our taxes, having a park, having a location? I don't know how many people have been absolutely tickled by the fact that we have food trucks in Faram. People driving home, they can stop by and get something to eat that's not Dairy Queen. I like Dairy Queen, it's fine and all, but it's not a food truck. Chairman Thompson, I'd really like to say thank you for standing up for southwest Virginia. I know that this area of the world doesn't get a lot of appreciation, and I really do greatly appreciate that. I feel very much like what we're doing here is very much like that in Franklin County. You know, we're not the fancy side of the county, and that's okay with us, but we deserve the same nice things that everybody else does. You're not going to find harder-working people than in Faram. I know a lot of, was discussed about the Smith Farm this evening. We had a lot of funding questions about how we're going to produce those things out at Smith Farm. What we're offering with our community is to go out and get the monies to do the stuff so the county doesn't have to. We get the same benefit that the Parks and Rec does, but the county doesn't have to spend a single dime with what we're planning. And we think that that's good stewardship of the taxpayers' money. We think that's good stewardship of the property that you guys have been entrusted with, and we think overall that's a good decision that benefits not only Faram but Franklin County. Thank you guys so much for everything you do.
Matt Pagans?
Matt Pagans, 350 Hickory Hills Lane, Faram. I'm here to speak in support of the Friends of Faram Park. Having had the pleasure of getting to know the members of this group and also Faram Forward over the past couple months, I can tell you that what Supervisor Tatum said previously is true. This is a group of people that live in and love their community, that are taking the chance to invest in their community and make it better. Also fully agree with, I believe it may have been Supervisor Smith that said, "Who better knows the needs and has the interest of the community than the people that live there?" Their proposal improves livability and promotes quality of life. It meets Franklin County's comprehensive plan and supports goals in the Faram Village Plan. Like Supervisor Carter said, this is a prime example of what livability and quality of life means. Keep in mind, saying yes to their proposal doesn't require you to appropriate any funds. It actually saves taxpayer money on development cost and will help bring in revenue for the county. Vote yes and let the Friends of Faram Park get to work.
You'll answer to that, won't you, Bob?
Yeah. Bob Pollard, 800 Thompson Ridge Road, Faram, Virginia. I come tonight, I didn't know which shirt to wear. I represent a lot of different groups, as many of you know. But I've been a member of the Faram Lions Club for over forty-five years, lived in the Faram community for over forty-five years. And I don't think I've ever seen a group of people across the board from so many different areas supportive of the community like I see right now in Faram. It's amazing to walk around the Farm and Craft Market and see people I haven't seen in years, meet in a place that is a community place, and want to stay for hours and talk and chat and interact. And I think, you know, a park is a place for that. And the proposal that's up for Faram Park, to me, represents the support of you all. I volunteer for everything on both ends of the county and do so many of those things because I want, as Rebecca said, I want us to really feel good about living here, but I want you all to support that. And I speak in favor of that because I honestly haven't seen people as excited about a project as I've seen about Faram Park. So I urge you to get behind it. I know you see dollar signs when you see the property. The property's been there a long time. This is an excellent opportunity. I'm a botanist, a naturalist. I teach master naturalist classes. The property is a wonderful place to wander and go through. We have trails already there. They connect to the Faram College Trails. It is a place that ought to be preserved, but it's also a place where the kids at Faram Elementary, people within the county, I can lead hikes for them, or we can have different events. So please get behind it and offer it something reasonable that we can help raise the money. We're willing. I know other community groups have raised money to do this. I know we can do it. I'm willing to do it. I stayed when I retired four years from Faram College. I stayed because I love the Faram community. So thank you for your time.
Paulette Chitwood?
I'm Paulette Chitwood, 2096 Altus Mill Road in Rocky Mill, currently Rocky Mill. I am fifth generation Franklin County on one side, fourth generation on the other side. I've got family living and buried in the town of Rocky Mount, Snow Creek, Glade Hill, Union Hall, Pen Hook, all of these areas. I lived in Union Hall for ten years, and I've worked there over twenty years. Union Hall is home. Living there or living in this county over all that time has given me a deep respect and a need for community, an absolute need, no matter where I've lived, to know and depend on my neighbors, to both fuss with them and support each other, both. That's community. The village of Union Hall, folks, no longer exists except for a convenience store, a garden center, and two old buildings, one of which is the Union Hall Grocery Store, the other is the Union Hall Baptist Church. They are the community that Union Hall used to be and no longer is. There is no community, there is no community center in Union Hall. It's a crossroads. To be very clear, Mrs. Smith's Gil Creek District and Dan Quinn's Union Hall District are all about Smith Mountain Lake. Your communities, the rest of you, are nowhere as mixed as ours. We are mixed. We are natives, we are transplants who have chosen to make their lives here, and we are summer people. In the last four years, our population has doubled, if not tripled, and a prominent Realtor has said to me, "Paulette, there's nothing left to sell or buy." Okay? The sense of community that the other five districts you guys have is built on shared experience, shared history, shared family, and lifestyle agriculture, and it's unchallenged the way ours are. Union Hall and Gil's Creek are building their communities anew with people from many walks of life, many levels of money, origins, groups, and interests. Gil's Creek actually planned to buy the Grand Piano Building, right? To bring together in one place the arts and a lot of various different organizations, the pieces that the area has become. We in Union Hall want the same thing. No!
Thank you, ma'am.
No!
Thank you.
Thank you. And I timed it, too.
Connie Perdue?
My name is Connie Perdue. I am a native of Franklin County, and I did live the first twenty years of my life in Union Hall. My parents and my grandparents on both sides were...
Miss Perdue, you need to state your address for the record, please.
I live in Salem, Virginia right now. My address is 999 Givens Tyler Road, Salem, Virginia.
Do you own property in Franklin County, ma'am?
Pardon?
Do you own property in Franklin...
I certainly do. I own sixty-six acres of property in Franklin County.
Where's that at, ma'am?
It is adjacent to the Union Hall Baptist Church that we are discussing.
Okay.
Okay? I was gonna s...
Just for the record, ma'am, we, if you don't live in county...
Yes.
Then we don't do the talking. But if you've got property in the county, then that's where you...
I own sixty-six acres of property in Union Hall.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could we start the time over for her?
Yes.
And also...
It's already done.
Okay. And Ms. Chitwood, if you would leave your speech with our clerk, she can email that to all of us and we can see your final words.
Yes, indeed, please.
I'm sorry.
Ma'am?
Okay. So the next thing I was going to say is, I do not currently live in Union Hall, but I do still own sixty-six acres of property in Union Hall. I am particularly interested in the Union Hall Church project because the property, excuse me, I own is adjacent to the church property. Also, several years ago, the church members built a new foundation. I'm not sure if the plan was to expand the church or to build a new one at that time, but the foundation was only as far as they got. However, a portion of this new foundation is actually on my property. So if we are able to work and this restoration project is allowed to move forward, I will consider donating a little bit of land to the project so that the entire new foundation actually belongs to the church site and possibly a little bit more land to provide parking space for folks that would visit what we're hoping will be a community center and historic site. I am interested in supporting this project as I see it as an opportunity to preserve a portion of Union Hall's history that I'm afraid is being lost, and this would be in a unique setting and also to provide a place where people can gather to share their knowledge of years past and other things. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Barbara Board?
I'm Barbara Board, and I live at 133 Leisure Lane, Union Hall. I am here to ask for your cooperation with the Union Hall interests in securing the Union Hall Baptist Church, the purpose of creating a multipurpose space. I'm a native of Union Hall, grew up on a tobacco farm down Rock Cliff Road. The community I grew in, grew up in was not perfect, but we connected to one another and what was needed to make a living and to take care of our community life needs. We primed each other's tobacco, we raked and baled one another's hay, picked each other's corn, raised each other's barns, met in one another's homes for extension homemaker club meetings. A local farmer drove the school bus, and a neighbor was postmistress. We rejoiced and took pride when one of our tobacco primers, corn pickers, hay builders, farmer's son was drafted in the NFL, and we all became forty-niner fans. After being away for over forty years, I returned to my family farm on Leisure Lane. The community environment and life operations, the bond of familiarity that I left behind is no longer as present or as strong, and you've heard my neighbor speak of this. We are a collection of natives and people from all over the nation. We are a collection of houses in the same zip code. We see the restoration and the repurposing of the church contributing to the establishment of a common bond and helping to reinvent our community. In the community discussions about the renewal of the county's comprehensive plan, quality of life was explored. A multipurpose center is a step strategy in that direction. It's a place we can honor our culture, provide a natural living environment, and a place for leisure and social interactions, all of which are indicators of quality of life. In gathering information about the church's history and in sharing about what we're doing, both former church members and newcomers have said, "Let me know how I can help." That has warmed my heart. That alone brings us together to do joint work together, support each other in sharing our labor and our talents, and creates a belonging and a sense of community. It's just like raising a barn. Please support our interests. We recognize that budget interests are a major part of what you do. However, we assure that you would agree that a collection of other provisions helps create a Franklin County with a strong well-being. This return on your investment will without a doubt be of greater value than the property's worth or a potential sale. Thank you each for your public service, and we appreciate it. Looking forward to your support and partnership on this quality of life initiative. Thank you.
Judy Sink?
I decided I'd make a public appearance tonight.
Miss Sink, you need to state your name and address for the record.
Sorry. Judy Sink. At the current time, I live at 1881 Brick Church Road, which I'm pretty sure all of you have seen my letters, my name, and my address for about six or seven years now. I have mixed emotions right now because after seeing what is being destroyed... I have mixed emotions right now because after seeing what is being destroyed just a few feet from my home has broken my heart. To see the landscape absolutely destroyed, the streams, and what was my well now contaminated can no longer support our native fish and aquatic friends. My husband and his grandparents are rolling over in their graves. Nevertheless, at the same time, I realize that I made the right choice in allowing Runo Gas to take my property and my home. One morning while watching the pipes being buried, an older man came over to speak to me and asked me what I thought. I politely told him that the entire thing was gonna blow when the magic switch was flipped. "Oh, no," he said. "It's all safe." I asked if the connections of the forty-two inch pipe to a six-inch pipe had been tested, and his response was, "It'll work." Notice that he never stated it had been tested, just that it will work. My question to all of you is this: Are you prepared for the when, not the if, the pipeline fails? It will fail. There will be lives, homes, landscape wiped out, gone, no trace of anything left. All of this pipe has been above ground for six to seven years. The coating has sloughed off, the wells, wells have rusted, and who knows what else has happened to that pipe? Have the links of pipe been tested? No, they haven't. They have not been tested. I know that some of you were not on the board when this monster was approved. However, being on the board now makes you responsible. So, are you prepared for the aftermath? I understand now why my letters have gone unanswered. You all knew or were conspiring with Runo Gas. You all knew that they were going to take my home, so why would you respond to my request for a privacy screen or a sense of security? It all makes sense now. And all I can say to you is I hope you're happy with your choices and your decisions in allowing this horrible monster to take over and destroy the beauty of Franklin County, not to mention the damage this pipeline will cause to Smith Mountain Lake. So, all I say to you is, hang on, baby, tie a knot, 'cause troubles are coming.
Bonnie Law.
I'm Bonnie Law. My mail address is Spoons Mill, Virginia. I'm here tonight on behalf of Preserve Franklin County regarding the Mountain Valley Pipeline. To my complete and total dismay, honestly, I, I just, I can't even imagine, it's, it's been going on this long, that after nine years and seven months, we still feel compelled to come in front of this body to talk about this continued safety systemic problem called the Mountain Valley Pipeline. They had a complete and total rupture of the pipe atop Adney Gap, Mr. Jamison, in your district, I'm sorry, right across the county line from your district, here about two weeks ago, and it wasn't some little leak that was reported, it was a complete and total failure of the pipe. It ruptured. So, are we talking about defective pipes that we're seeing here from India, these nasty little well-spun pipes that were involved in the Keystone Pipeline that are now been proven defective? You know, did some factory somewhere in India or somewhere else do all the factory welds? Have they failed? Are they bad? What about all the x-rays that were supposedly done? You know, did they really do them? Did they not? Where are the test results of the pipe coating? Was it tested? Was it not? Did it fail? Did it not? How many more anomalies do we have along the route? Supposedly, they had seventy anomalies in West Virginia in only about a sixty-day period, and now we're reported that we've got flaw after flaw after flaw of the pipe here. But we cannot get to the bottom of it. Nobody will tell us what's wrong, what happened, who's to blame. It's the blame game. FERC blames FEMA, FEMA blames MVP. MVP, they blame, you know, whoever. If you call FEMA, you get somebody working from home that says, "I'm sorry, I can't help you. Will transfer me to somebody who can help me." Well, I'm sorry, I'm working from home. I can't transfer you. I mean, it's a joke dealing with these people, okay? It is an absolute joke. So, I don't know if you all are happy with what's going on. If you're not, then you need to get in front of some TV cameras and get real unhappy real quick, or get Morgan Griffith down here, our US Congressman, or get some of the FEMA representatives in person to show up for a public meeting in this very room. But we need a congressional hearing probably to get to the bottom of all this because it's just the continued blame game, okay? So, anyway, you all, each board member received about nine different electronic communications from us, and it lasts from about May the seventh through the May seventeenth with various news articles and various documents that have been filed on the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission Electronic Docket. All of those items are self-explanatory and are pretty straightforward, so I suggest a very aggressive action here and a very aggressive stance because if you don't, you're never gonna get anything accomplished here, and you're never gonna get to the bottom of this, and if this pipeline blows up and kills somebody in this county-
Thank you, ma'am.
...or burns somebody's house and church to the ground, then we all know who to sue, don't we?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Selvage. I live at 3080 Turner's Creek Road in Farum. Lately, we've been hearing a lot on the news, and there's a word that really annoys me. I hear it all the time, it drives me crazy. Most of the time when you hear that word, it's in a positive sense, something is unprecedented, but hey, it worked. That's what we're trying to do in Farum, something unprecedented, and we would like your support. Rebecca Saunders has spent hours and hours and hours following the Farum Village Plan, following the real estate assessment. She's answered all the questions, and all we need is an okay to go ahead. We have the people, we have the knowledge, we have the will, and what we don't know, we can find out. There's somebody in Farum that can help us, somebody in the county that can help us, and the community wants this. We have, in Farum, we are part of the Crooked Road, we're going to be part of the Moonshine Trail, and we need a facility that shows that we are ready to take on this additional responsibility, especially with tourism, with the kids, with the homeschoolers. There's just so much that we can do, and we're all willing to do it, and the bottom line is, it's not gonna cost the county a dime. Thank you.
Debbie from Union Hall. I apologize, I can't read the last name.
Is there someone here named Debbie-
Crawford.
-that lives in Union Hall that wants to speak?
Debbie, oh, she left. She's left, I understand. Debbie Crawford. And that's, that's all I have.
That's all you have? Is there anyone else here that would like to speak tonight? Come forward, ma'am. State your name and address for the record.
Lori Dupierre, 112 Cedar Ridge Road, Union Hall. You're part of a special interest group in Union Hall calling ourselves Friends of Union Hall, and we're interested in having the Union Hall Baptist Church, which is located on the corner of Kempford and Standiford Road, included in the Virginia Department of Historic Resources. This process requires the signature of the current owner, which happens to be the county. Last year, Department of Historic Resources determined that this historical building of, this is a historical building of significant interest, and they performed an inspection and an assessment. So, quoting the surveyor assessment on 8/23/23, "The design and construction methods of the Union Hall Baptist Church building lack distinction and are similar to regional church buildings of the late twentieth century and early twenty-first century. However, the church remains an integral reflection of a settlement system established by the first generation of enslaved people to gain their freedom and to create a community following emancipation, and it symbolizes the freedom of religious expression that anchored the African-American community to the landscape during the lengthy period from segregation through integration. Our hope is that someday this building can be restored and used as a community center again, honoring the legacy of those who came before us, celebrating a shared heritage, and create a space where people from all walks of life can come together to meet, gather, and socialize. We thank you for your attention to this matter, and we look forward to the opportunity to work together in preserving and celebrating our community's history." And I also want to say that we, the Friends of Union Hall, fully support the Farum Park Project, and we hope that you vote yes to their proposal. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak-
Chairman Thompson.
...tonight for public comment? If you do, come forward, state your name and address for that. Anyone else? Come forward, ma'am.
My name is Kendra Sink. I am 7150 Dry Hill Road, Farum. I have been born and raised in Farum. My mother was born and raised in Farum. We have never seen people come together like we have since this Friends of Farum Park. We have both volunteered to be part of it, and I would like to say I hope that y'all come together and vote to, to work with us and let us have a space. I have children that are growing and coming up in Farum, and I would love for them to see the heritage and the stuff that they are planning on doing in Farum. It's our turn to make a difference in our county. Please vote yes to our proposal. Thank you.
All right, I want to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity, so I'll open it one more time. Anybody who wants to come forward and speak, come, state your name.
I live at 2900 Johnny's Ridge Road. They call it Farum because I can't find any place closer to call it. I live on one of those mountaintops we call Off Parkway. I just wanted to pinpoint and address the economic, the economic advantages for us, for the county and for all of us, to support the Friends of Farum Park. One of them has already been addressed, increased local tourism. The establishment of an amphitheater, camping facilities, and events venue will attract visitors from outside the area, boosting local tourism. Boost to small businesses. The Farum Farmers and Craft Market will provide a permanent location for local vendors, promoting small business growth and supporting the local economy. Job creation. Development and maintenance of the park will create jobs in construction, landscaping, and park management, as well as seasonal employment opportunities during events. Enhanced property values. Improved community amenities such as ADA, accessible trails, playgrounds, and a dog park can increase nearby property values benefiting local homeowners. Community spending. Festivals, markets, and events will encourage community members and visitors to spend money locally on food, lodging, and other services stimulating the economy. Attractive to new residents. Enhanced recreational and community facilities make Farum an attractive place to live, potentially drawing new residents and increasing your tax base. Public health and wellness. Access to recreational facilities and outdoor activities can improve public health, reducing healthcare costs and increasing productivity. Environmental benefits. The creation of green spaces and trails can improve environmental quality, making the area more attractive and potentially drawing eco-conscious visitors and residents. Cultural enrichment. The amphitheater and event spaces will provide venues for cultural activities.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Anyone else want to come forward? They did not make it and talked to the clerk about putting on her. Anyone else? I want to make sure everybody's got their three minutes. All right, seeing nobody else coming forward, I'm gonna close the public comment.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you all for being here and for your interest in the community. Yes, ma'am.
Can I make a quick statement?
Yes, ma'am.
Irrespective of how the board will opine on these issues before it, I just want to say, our villages, our designated growth areas, this is what it is all about, and Westlake was kind of the first one, Hales Ford area, and seeing what's going on in Farum and Union Hall is just, it is an organic community involvement that is really what I did not even expect when I got elected to see, that, you know, I was thinking that the county would bore, you know, a lot of this, and to see that citizens in our districts are taking ownership and are wanting our county to be better, it makes me proud to sit in this seat, and I just want you all to know that.
Okay, we've got some business that we still gotta take care of, and then we gotta go into closed session. We need to go back to Snow Creek that we started. The clerk informs me that they checked the, the tapes. They have no record of any conversation after the motion, and the motion was as Madam Clerk read it. With that being said, I'll go back to Mr. Mitchell, it's your district. The motion, the motion was made, you got any further comment that you, you'd like to make in regards to, to the Snow Creek Rescue Squad?
I would say there's much more to their plan than just the one bedroom living quarters. There's bathrooms and other things. I don't doubt that Ms. Smith has good points, and they're fine for the future, but to go back on what we did at that, at the last meeting, I, I will not, I won't take part in it myself, but that's up to the rest of the board.
It's, I've never had this to happen before since I was chairman, or prior to that, just wanting to change, change a motion, you know, in the middle of the stream. I understand and I agree with Ms. Smith. I think sometimes we really pack a lot of stuff on these agendas, and everybody's just tired and wore out at the end. And I think that it was laid out to, to the good, that it was, Mr. Carter had input on how the money would be disseminated out, how it would go forward, even to the fact that he stated that before a check was written, that it would be to the Snow Creek Rescue Squad, as well as to who the contractor was to make sure that it was done. But that was my understanding, but yet there's no record of that. So, that, that leaves a, a conundrum for me on, on that as well. And also, one of the things that I thought we discussed, and maybe that's, that's what it was, came from the end. I want to make sure that when we, we being the county, this is taxpayers' dollars we're talking about. It's not my money, and it's just not come from one area, it comes from the whole county. These tax dollars come from the entire county. These tax dollars come from the entire county, not just one particular area. And I want to make sure that if, in the future, that Snow Creek or any other rescue squad no longer is a rescue squad, but taxpayers have money in that, and it has been designated as a rescue squad, that it continues to be a rescue squad, that if the county has to pick it up, it doesn't become a bingo hall, or just another building in ruins to fall down. That concerns me as well. So with that being said, I guess I said my little three cent. What's the pleasure of the board? How do you guys want to deal with this?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
For Mr. Mitchell especially. I'm not looking, I'm not making a motion to rescind the action by the board. My motion is to amend. I just want that clarification, but I'm not trying to walk back what you're trying to do. I'm just trying to put some accountability into it.
Motion to amend the previous motion adopted April 16th for 100,000 for Snow Creek Sleeping Quarters to include the following conditions: Develop a project scope consistent with sleeping quarters not to exceed a two-bedroom plan. Directed the donors of the 80,000 to seek bids acting in their own capacity and agreed upon scope for two bedrooms with public safety. They've already done that, correct? They got a bid from somebody that was 180,000. They already did that. If the project bid comes to over 80,000, which it has, the board will request review by the Public Safety Administrator with subsequent recommendation to ensure the request is in alignment with capital and operational priorities. If there's an affirmative recommendation for public safety, the county will then issue an RFP with an agreed-upon scope. The 80,000 raised will be first utilized. If project comes to 80-plus or less, the county funds will be utilized. If project proceeds, a MOU will be developed to articulate the details. Public Safety will make the decision if and when 24/7 staffing will be required. What do you want to do?
I actually have a couple comments and questions, so I have thought about this a little bit since the meeting, and I would be opposed to rescinding, you know, I don't ever feel we should go back on what we've done. However, the motion is to amend, and so I'm considering the amended request. A couple questions I have, and I'm not even sure who the right person is for this, but kind of, I made assumptions when we voted, and one was that Public Safety would endorse this. And so, kind of to Chris and Steve, is this a project, absent Nick bringing it forward, would you two have brought this forward to us and said, "This is absolutely necessary for public safety"? I'm just curious, and it's not going to change our vote, but I'm curious what your opinion is of that, because I assume there was a strong support from Public Safety.
Mr. Quinn, I'll try to answer that from staff's perspective. The Public Safety Department does not necessarily have a comprehensive public safety facilities plan. And so, you know, if were one in place, if such a plan were in place, and there was a recommendation, if you will, that looked at all volunteer rescue squads, buildings, facilities, and so forth, that laid out, if you will, a plan, a capital plan, a facilities plan, we as staff would defer to that. In the absence of that, I can't necessarily, you know, say, if you will, that, you know, this is what the county would recommend when we haven't gone through that, necessarily that exercise. Now, that being said, I will say this: We know public safety facilities are quite expensive. They're, in terms of capital-intensive. The county, of course, recently constructed a new fire EMS facility, not without cost. I mean, we know there are costs there. We are fortunate in Franklin County that we have other facilities, Fork Mountain, Faram, others that are owned by these nonprofits, these volunteer squads, Franklin County Rescue as another, that, of course, in concert with the county that we operate out of, with career staff and volunteer staff, to go in and reconstruct those facilities, if we didn't have those, would be quite expensive. So from that perspective, certainly, we're fortunate that we have this cooperation with these rescue volunteer agencies and groups. And of course, I would add, if Mr. Sandy needs to add, you know, would like to add anything from his perspective overseeing public safety, you know, without the absence of our Public Safety Director this evening, but I hope that answers your question, Mr. Quinn.
Madam Clerk, who made the motion on Snow Creek? Mr. Mitchell did, correct?
That's correct.
Man on man.
So I have a couple more, actually, Ronnie. So one was, so I understand right now we don't have 24/7 coverage there, and so I don't think the, it's kind of the cart before the horse, but I don't think the vote authorized for there to be 24/7. Is there a common agreement around that, that we did not, that vote did not authorize 24/7 coverage there? It simply provided the sleeping quarters for the people if a decision was made by Public Safety to have people there?
That is my understanding of the motion that was made and that was put forward.
Okay. Then the third is, again, an assumption on my part, is that there would have been a formal RFP process. Everybody knows I'm big on competition, and so it sounds like the volunteers have gone out, but will the county go out with a formal RFP for this, or will we just work with what was collected by the volunteers at this point?
Mr. Quinn, and certainly our county attorney can weigh in if he needs from a procurement standpoint, but the fact that this is not a county facility per se, we would not necessarily go through an RFP process unless, you know, that was the pleasure of the board, but really, you know, there's an outside entity that would be doing the work. So, you know, whether they issue that RFP and so forth, that would be upon them, because essentially, it's their facility.
Okay. And then the last one was, I know it was tabled as sleeping quarters, but did anybody, and maybe Nick, this is to you, did anybody look at the plans and confirm it's sleeping quarters? Like, to me, sleeping quarters, I know you typically put two staffers at a site, so that equates to two bedrooms, but is there a plan that shows this is truly just sleeping quarters, and it hasn't had, like, scope creep to it?
I'm a little, I don't know why you guys didn't get that copy, because I handed them out.
I did not get anything.
I don't know why y'all didn't get that.
You gave them out last, at the last meeting.
I gave them at the last meeting, because Amy went and made the copies of it.
That's my copy, I had it in my folder, so somebody gave it to me.
I did not get one.
Yeah, I handed those out at the last meeting, I think they were already sitting.
I was here.
On the dice.
It was my understanding that it was done this way because it is not a county-owned building. And it was done this way because of the procurement. They didn't have to go through the state and the county's procurement system. And that was my understanding of this all the time.
But the problem is...
I mean, there's a part of me, there's a part of me that, for the act of fairness, to go ahead and call for a vote on this motion. But then there's a part of me that says this has already been took care of last month, and we're doing a redundancy, and we just can't keep changing our mind every time that it comes up. What do y'all want to do? What do y'all want to do?
Everybody knows where I stand on it.
I'm with you.
If nobody makes this a motion, it's...
Well, that's what she's done. She's put it out there as a motion.
Just a formal motion from Ms. Smith.
Ms. Smith, is this your motion?
Yeah, the conditions, obviously, I'm learning information that would, you know, that would change some of the conditions, that would probably have to be deleted. Evidently, the scope's been established. Evidently, this group got an estimate, and, you know, $100,000 of taxpayer money, and we're going to let a group of citizens decide who's going to do this, and we're just going to give them a blank check? That's my problem. It's the transparency and the accountability of taxpayer money. So the first, one, two, three, I think I would, my motion with these conditions have to be changed. I still do believe that we need to enter into some formal process where there are some competitive estimates. Maybe we ask for two or three, and we see what's out there, before we would write a check, and that there would be an agreed-upon scope that Public Safety is involved in, to be agreed upon so that it's not arbitrary, and that, yes, the stations are nonprofit stations, but there's a lot of county money going into the stations in terms of apparatus.
There's not but $100,000 going to it right now that's been approved.
I'm not, I'm talking countywide. My point is, yeah, this is $100,000, but this motion as it stands does not put any due process in place for the accountability of that $100,000, and that is very troublesome to me. I think the citizens of this county deserve to see how this is going to be done, what we're going to require for transparency and accountability of that money. That's how I want to amend this motion, is to put some due process steps in place.
I thought the due process was invoices being submitted to Brian. That's what I thought was the due process.
Had no idea about that.
Well, you should have called me, Lori.
Nick, don't go there.
I mean, this was done at Burnt Chimney, at the Burnt Chimney Fire Station, on the 25,000, one nothing said there. When he fixed the road, there'd be done. One of the things said there.
Well, that was a road repair.
What's the difference?
There's a lot of difference.
It's still with Burnt Chimney, necessary to Snow Creek.
Well, I won't even put the motion forward if the board does not want to contemplate the motion. I have a lot of...
I don't think it's a bad idea, that's what, but I think it's not the right time. It's already been done with this. It needs to be brought up now for the future.
Needs to be amended.
For the future.
It needs to be amended.
However you want to put it.
Okay.
And a lot of this, you know, a lot of this discussion, I mean, I don't have it with me, this is Mike, but I got mine at home that we're giving out last month.
I mean, even you guys...
I think that, if y'all want to put it out there for an amended motion, that's going to be up to you. I know how I'm going to vote. I think that this, I think that this is a good idea, and it needs to be brought forward in the future. And I think there's a couple things that need to be added to this, such as protection of county dollars, taxpayers' dollars towards these buildings if we're going to start doing it. But the only building that the county actually owns is the Glade Hill, the new Glade Hill Fire Station. And if we're going to start throwing tax dollars at these others, and I don't mean that in a negative way throwing, if we're going to start doing that, we need to set up rules. Like I said a while ago, this money, tax dollars, in my opinion, it doesn't need to mean if that rescue squad or whatever goes belly up, that it turns into a bingo hall, because we got tax dollars in it. These dollars come from the entire county. So what do you want to do? I think it's a done deal with Snow Creek. That's my opinion. Y'all not going to talk?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to put a motion on the table if the board doesn't have at least some consensus to have a motion, to entertain a motion. I'm going to go on the record clearly that there is no due process that's been put into the record in a formal way to protect this $100,000, and I object that we are being that haphazard with taxpayer money.
Duly noted. Anyone? Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the words of one of my former colleagues, "I think this cow's already left the barn, and it's going to be hard to bring her back." For me personally, I look at the fact that the citizens of Snow Creek raised $80,000 towards this building. Even though we're putting $100,000 with it, I think we have to have some faith and trust that they're going to do the right thing with it moving forward. But I agree with Ms. Smith's comments. I think in the future, before we get into this situation, we need to lay some groundwork, and we need to put some stipulations on these motions before we just hand it out there. But for me, I'm not interested now in going back and trying to correct what we've already done. That's just my, that's me. If you want to make a motion, Lori...
No, if there's no support for it, and I don't want to drag the board through a contentious discussion on this any further, really. We've got a lot of things that we're working on, you know, so if that's the will of the board...
But I think for me, it comes down to trust in the citizens to do the right thing, just like the Faram Forward Group or the Union Hall Church Group. You know, we have to work with the public back and forth, and just like they have to have some trust in what we do, we need to have some faith and trust in what they do. But all that being said, I think moving forward, maybe we need to have a work session about some of these motions where we hand out money and lay some ground rules.
I mean, I've already agreed with you on that.
Yeah, one of the things I was going to propose Thursday night, I think a first and second reading is in order for this board between two meetings for anything that's proposed that's outside of our budget, that we would put it on the table one month, first reading, second reading, we'll have a month in between to consider questions and deliberation, and come back the next month and vote on it, if it's something outside of budget.
I've got no problem with that at all, because that's what I was talking about while ago with this Smith Farm. It's moving too quick, wanting to give away stuff on the nutrients and stuff. It doesn't hurt to have, set aside for the next board meeting for a work session, and it doesn't have to be in 30 minutes. It needs to be however long it takes.
Maybe as a follow-up to this, we could direct staff to come up with some ground rules for these type motions and proposals in the future, and look at that, and as a board, talk about it and go about it that way.
I think we agreed that we'll have a work session on this nutrients in June, and if staff is prepared, if time permits, to have this discussion in regards to the, calling an MOU or whatever, MOU or whatever you want to call it, on how we are going to do this in the future. We need to do that, but I'm not going to call for a vote on this, this has already been a done deal.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I've been sitting here listening to everyone's comments on this, and everyone makes valid, very valid points about looking out for county money and taxpayer dollars. I think bare minimum, if nothing else comes out from this, and we need to do this anyway before we put a, whether we go with a 24/7 crew at Snow Creek or not, we need to have some type of an MOU with the existing department that's there, because we don't want to dedicate putting a 24/7 crew down there, and then all of a sudden they come up and say, "No, we'll kick you out." We need to have some type of an MOU in place, like we would with Faram or Callaway.
Anywhere else.
So that's something that, bare minimum, that we need to take care of regardless of where we go. But everyone, everyone made very valid points on this, and I agree with Chairman Thompson. I think we've already said it, I would hate to tell the fine people at Snow Creek, you know, "We're going to do this," and they start making plans of moving forward, and then we throw something else in the mix. So I think we need to make sure that whatever we do in the future, that we do, I do deal with.
Covering our bases.
Yes, absolutely.
Quinn?
From a preliminary standpoint, Chairman, I fully understand and agree, there's nothing wrong with the first and second reading, but there's also the practical Murphy's Law part of it. By saying that, you're going to have an emergency next month, but you're going to have to...
Yeah.
So when you decide to do that, leave yourself some wiggle room from the standpoint of the ability to waive that policy. You know, my friends in Allegheny do that with an unanimous vote, then they can go ahead, and, you know, everybody that's there agrees that it can be taken up that night, and it gets taken up that night. But don't, you know, don't paint yourself... But don't paint yourself in a corner and find, you know, because you're guaranteeing you're going to have an emergency.
Well, I was going to ask you to draft some language that would become part of our board policies.
That's good wisdom, that's why we pay you big bucks.
I'm still waiting on it. I know it's going to be any time.
Any time now, huh?
I can see squeezing money out of this board is...
With that being said, with that being said, be prepared that it all depends upon how much time we've got left with Mr. Quinn.
And staff can work with Mr. Quinn.
Tatum, you've got something to read?
Yes, sir.
We need to go back into closed session?
Yes.
Because we didn't get through with nothing.
Mr. Chairman, the Franklin County Board of Supervisors will motion to enter into a closed meeting in accordance with 2.2-3711, A1 Personnel Discussion of Appointments to County Boards, Commissions, etc. A3 Discussion of the Acquisition of Real Property or Disposition of Real Property. A5 Discussion Concerning a Perspective Business or Industry or the Expansion of an Existing Business or Industry. Or A29 Discussion of the Terms of a Public Contract of the Code of Virginia as amended.
Second.
We'll go to, got a second on that. Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call, please?
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. We're going to be 75. For you folks that are here, we thank you all for being here. We're going into a closed session. Do not know how long the meeting's going to be. We will come back here to adjourn. And when we adjourn from here, it will be at 3 o'clock next Thursday.
This Thursday.
This coming Thursday, what's next Thursday, isn't it?
It's the next Thursday.
It's the next Thursday. I mean, it's 23rd. You've got something to read?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I would motion to certify that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which the certification applies. And only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which the certification applies.
I need a second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call, please?
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum is absent. Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, we've got two more appointments that we need to do that we didn't get done a while ago as an oversight. West Piedmont Planning Commission. There apparently was a snafu in that, and they got it in reverse. Mr. Nick Mitchell is on the executive board when it was supposed to be Mr. Tatum. So we need to get that reversed. We need to get that reversed, and we need someone to make that a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, but why do we need to do that?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to reverse me from the executive committee for the Western Piedmont Plan Commission and put in Mr. Tatum.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? I'm not saying no. And then we need to make an appointment to the Faram Water Authority and appoint Jim Alpine. I think I've got that name right, A-L-P-I-N, Alpine, as the new member or continuing member. I need a motion on that in a second.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? All right, we standing, have I missed anything else? Have we overlooked anything else?
Are we going to have comments by supervisor?
Next in the work session.
Thursday.
Thursday, yeah.
Oh, Thursday.
This Thursday.
That's when we're going to do the Chris and ours. Okay, with that being said, we stand at recess until May the 23rd at 3 o'clock in this room.